Good evening and welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Regular Board of Education Meeting. Today is May the 10th, 2022, and it is 5:15. And I'd like to open the meeting by asking all of our students that are in the audience today if you would please stand and lead us in the flag salute.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'd like to move to approve the agenda minus item 14E.
I'll second the motion.
Second. The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Eli Raymer. Dr. Bregy, would you like to report on closed session, please?
Thank you. There was no closed action items today. President Wells?
Thank you. Our next item is teacher-student spotlight, and I'll let Dr. Bregy take the lead.
Thank you. It's really exciting to see how many people are in person today. So thank you very much for being here today. We're excited about the recognitions that we are going to be presenting for you. And I'd like to kick us off with the principal at Hawthorne, Sarah Kabor.
Hi, everyone. I'm so excited to fill the seats today with all of our students. President Wells, Board of Education, Dr. Bregy, thank you so much for having us. I'm Sarah Kabor. I'm the principal at Hawthorne School. Got that wrong last time. And I'm here to introduce Ms. Bozen, who's our Makerspace teacher. She's here with seven 4th and 5th graders from Hawthorne School. Just real quick, Ms. Bozen has been here for five years. She joined Beverly Hills Unified in 2017. Initially, she was an I-4 coach, and then she moved to El Rodeo where she taught technology when we had technology only in a class. And the last three years since reconfiguration, she's been the Makerspace teacher. Her background's a multiple subject, and also she has a computer science certificate. So she uses part of that and puts it to good use in Makerspace. Just to let you know, I'm sure she's gonna share a little bit about Makerspace, but Makerspace we talk about as design engineering, and it's the design process of having parameters to test something out, fail, and try again. So you take it over, Ms. Bozen.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Bozen. I'm the Makerspace teacher, like Sarah just mentioned, at Hawthorne School. Today, you're gonna get to see some of the work that our students in 4th and 5th grade did at our Makerspace classroom. So part of the BHUSD Strategic Plan and also the Hawthorne School Site Plan is that students will be able to identify careers in STEM. So 3D printing is amazing because it's now used in so many different fields, so it lends itself perfectly to this school. So when we first started learning about 3D printing, students learned about how 3D printing works and how it can be used by doctors to make prosthetics. Several kids noticed that their orthodontist had them to print out molds of their teeth. Students saw how 3D printing was used in several different industries from NASCAR to NASA and even Peloton to make that little red knob that makes a brake. So in 4th grade and 5th grade, the students have used the engineering design process to create their designs. In 4th grade, the students learn the basics of 3D design by creating a snowflake. So they learn things such as how to group objects, how to make them symmetrical, how to duplicate objects, and how to use what is called subtraction to create the negative space or holes in an object. So in 5th grade, students build on their knowledge from the previous year, and then we learned a little bit more about prototyping and what that looks like and how that can usually be part of a business plan. So the 5th graders were challenged to design a food truck as part of a business proposal. So they came up with a food truck, their idea, the brand, a slogan, a menu, everything. So the students all used a program called Tinkercad to design their projects, and then we printed them out using our 3D printers. So now you're gonna get to meet some of our amazing students to share their work with you. So first, you'll hear from the 4th graders, and they're gonna share their snowflakes. And then you'll hear from the 5th graders, who are gonna share some of their food trucks. So thank you so much for having us today.
Thank you.
Great. So how about 4th and 5th graders? Do you guys want to come down first?
Hi, I'm Ashton. I'm in Mrs. Smith's class in 4th grade. I chose the theme to be my family's first initials. In the middle, the letter is O for Omid, R is for my mom Roxana, A for me Ashton, and my dog Ahsoka, and M for Mia, my sister. This is my inspiration for my snowflake. Hope you liked it.
Hi, my name is Kaden Copenhagen, and I am in Ms. Termin's classroom. I have designed my snowflake with shapes and lines, and I have... I have... I like how it turned out.
Hi, my name is Asma Al-Khalaf. I am in 4th grade, and I'm in Ms. Smith's class. This is my snowflake. I made it in Makerspace with Mrs. Bozen. My snowflake is pretty simple, but I love it. I made a plain line, then added a diamond on top. I made two little lines every little bit down the line. I added circles on each little line. I added my name on it, but it's not very visible, and that's my snowflake.
Hi, my name is Siham Al-Qayyan, and I'm in Ms. Smith's class, and my theme for my snowflake is shapes and letters. So at the tip, I added a heart, and I added Vs in the middle so it could connect and look nice. I also added my name, but it really isn't visible.
Oh, man. Hi, my name is Aiden. I'm in Ms. Coffin's class. This is Rocket Burgers. Their food is out of this world, literally. It is a transparent vehicle that sells earth food, burgers. I chose to make it look like a space shuttle, cuz, you know, space. It was originally supposed to be a normal one with the trailer that's supposed to be like a fuel tank. But, yeah. I started with an original design, then I used a little space shuttle in Ms. Bozen's class. And then I went from there. By me... Wait. I can't read this. Wait. So I went from there. I made the name. Oh, wait. I'm making it more... Oh, wait. I went from there by making it more of a space shuttle than a food truck. I made the flaps out of Sharpie, not printed in. Also, the wheels look kinda funky because they were supposed to glue in because they're so small. And anyone hungry yet?
Hi, my name is Ashton. I'm in 5th grade in Ms. Holberg's class. My food truck is called Pete's Pizza. I made a pizza slice to go on top of it so you could see what food truck it is from a distance. I put a person inside of the food truck so they can sell pizza to the customers. I put two little figures on the counter. One is a toy cat, and the other is supposed to be Elvis. It didn't appear well. On the other side of the food truck, there's a menu of our pizzas. I added Olive Garden's tomato sauce special just for fun. I added the stairs because workers need to get in and out of it. Finally, I added a guy to the front window so we can drive around. People named Pete Avery.
Hi, my name is Leah Abrishamy, and I'm in 5th grade at Hawthorne Elementary School. Today, I'm presenting my food truck from Ms. Bozen's Makerspace class. The name of my food truck is Crispy Kebab. This name represents one of my favorite Persian foods. My food truck consists of a waiter inside along with a serving table. It also includes an awning that symbolizes my food truck. Lastly, I have a personalized license plate with a detailed menu. My favorite part of this food truck is the waiter inside who serves the people the delicious food. All in all, I really enjoy this experience because it corresponds with my culture and makes me feel happy when I eat it. I love my food truck inside and out.
Thank you all so much. These are so amazing.
We have one more. Jonah sadly couldn't come to school today. He wasn't feeling good. But his was Ichikuru Ramen. And so he also did a little menu on the side and wrote the name of his food truck, and then did a bowl of ramen with the noodles on it, which is pretty cute. So, yeah, he did a really great job. So very impressive to pick up that quick of skill. So 3D design is like a really different way of thinking, so they did a really fantastic.
Thanks for bringing this. Thanks for bringing this before dinner. Appreciate it. You guys will all go out and eat, and we're just gonna be here.
They have so much detail in them. They're beautiful.
Do I want ramen? Do I want pizza? I don't know.
Did you guys wanna go around and... Eli, I'll let you go first.
Thank you. Makerspaces are fantastic. I'm so glad our students are able to have access to a space like that. The program Tinkercad is made by Autodesk, which produces other industry-grade computer-aided designer CAD softwares that we use at the high school and the robotics team. And just overall, I know Science Olympiad has an event involving CAD too. So the skills that all these students are learning now really will stay with them through high school. Definitely very connected to CTE and possibly into the workforce later. So it's fantastic. They're getting exposure to such fantastic programs, and it's really just a testament to it, seeing all of the amazing things that they're able to make. So keep up the good work. I'm really happy to see a program like this and to see students succeeding in it.
Well, I wanna thank everybody for bringing their projects here. They were amazing. Particularly very clever and different. And I wanna say one thing about this is that we talk about pathways, and this is the pathway for these students to get when they get to the middle school and then up to the high school. So we're starting them very young. Actually, Makerspace starts, I believe, in kindergarten or maybe 1st grade. I think it's kindergarten, and they go all the way up. So they're doing incredible things even at a younger age than the 4th and 5th grade. So I'm so pleased that we're feeding the middle school and the high school, and I wanna thank you all for bringing them. They are... Those things are amazing. So creative. Thank you again very much for sharing.
To just build off of what my colleagues were saying, I mean, I know firsthand as a technology CEO who has built hardware and sold it, how valuable these skills are in the workforce, to be able to go from concept to design to prototyping. I mean, this is... As much as academics aren't important, and of course they're important, these kinds of skills are incredibly valuable and is what sets our students, you know, apart from, you know, students coming out of other school districts. And I'm just incredibly proud of this program. So thank you. Thank you to the students. I loved all of... I loved all of what we saw. I'm a little partial to the crispy kebab cuz that sounds amazing, and that's my culture. But I... Really all phenomenal. You guys should all be very proud of the work. Thank you.
As a school psychologist who has gone to a lot of different school districts in the area and different schools, I can tell you that I don't know if you students are aware that not all school districts at this point do have access to 3D printing and Makerspace. And the technology is fairly new in schools. I mean, it's about five to 10 years, I believe. But I am so pleased to see that it really has arrived and the concept that the teacher has put forth for all the students. And I am so impressed and really happy to see that this is going on. And I can't lie, I've watched a lot of YouTube to see many reels of 3D printing. I find it absolutely mesmerizing to watch, and I myself have never printed anything by a 3D printer, but I hope to one day. Thank you. I will be there. Thank you.
I marvel at this. I look back in the course of my experience as a teacher, teaching 4th and 5th grade, and what I did with my kids versus what I did as a 4th and 5th grader versus now what you guys are doing. I mean, I was lucky to be able to draw a snowflake. You guys are making it. And to think about what's the next generation gonna be doing in 4th and 5th grade, it's really kind of miraculous, the times we live in, that we didn't know anything about, you know, downloading apps on a, you know, a phone or an iPad or anything like that, or 3D printers. And to see where we've come with technology is remarkable. And it's so refreshing to see that we're starting it early, that we're exposing our children to these possibilities early. Thank you all for sharing today. It's wonderful.
I agree, and it's really fun to watch. My daughter actually got into 3D printing when she was in high school, and it was a new thing then, and I was just astounded by all of the projects that she brought home. I think one of the things that I find... I think one of the things that I find, um, really valuable about projects like this is that you really do learn from trial and error and it really, um, you build a resilience and persistence in really achieving what you are showing us today. I'm sure that it wasn't the first time out the gate. And I really appreciate the work and the learning that goes into being able to produce uh, what you were able to share with us today. And it's really exciting and I think, um, and it is a pathway. I, I remember when I was touring colleges with my daughter and seeing, uh, metal 3D printers where they were actually printing things in metal. So it's really exciting and you're well on your way for lots of more, lots more adventures.
Students, it's so great to be able to see, uh, your final outcome. I think as teachers, um, the, the actualization of just, uh, being at a point where we can see students being responsible for their own learning and we're able to see that through your products that you've shared with us tonight. Um, Ms. Bozen, uh, when we first met, you were an I4 coach and you were so creative, just even as an I4 coach. I remember being so excited that you were going to take on this curriculum. And, and for students that may not realize this, um, a lot of these projects are, are really based on what the risks that your teacher will take to bring in these types of projects. Um, I've seen a very traditional approach to Makerspace. This is not a traditional approach. This is somebody who has taken on the risks to do things at a really high level. So students, you may not realize that, but your teacher has taken a lot of risks to bring you high-level projects. Um, and so Ms. Bozen, I just wanna thank you very much for that.
Sure.
Yeah, let's do a picture with all of the kids with their projects. They're so great. It's, this is one of those things where you really wish that the, um, the community at large really understood all of these great programs that we have at our school. So I encourage you all to, um, you know, to share this with your neighbors and your friends and let people know what these great programs are. So Dr. Bregy, would you like to introduce our next?
All the fun is still ahead?
Yeah, I'd let you go.
We have a very robust CTE program in our school district. And so we're gonna transition into, uh, some additional recognitions and I would like to uh, introduce a former student, but still a leader in our school district, Mr. Ricky Lee.
Good evening, uh, board members and everyone watching. Uh, my name is Ricky Lee and I am a current, uh, supervising producer at KBEV Six Media Center. Also an alum of Beverly Hills High, class of 2021. I was here actually some, uh, back in March of last year to briefly go over, uh, what we, uh, or all the accomplishments and achievements that we brought back, uh, from the Skills USA event. And I'm so proud to bring a similar type of presentation back, uh, this year round, actually in person, um, with amazing results as well. So all these students here and all the other, um, the, the handful number of students who were not able to make it here today, uh, competed in a Skills USA competition, which is a national organization, uh, which is a competition organized by a national organization, bringing students from current, very, uh, career and technical education programs. Um, not including all the way from broadcast news production, uh, to culinary and robotics and programs and so on and so on. Uh, this year, we competed in regionals and state competition. Regional competition happened in January. Uh, it was all virtual. However, we're so lucky to, um, to attend the, the state competition, which happened back in April 26th all the way to 28th in Ontario, California. Uh, we had 11 students participate from KBEV and two students from Culinary Arts Program, uh, led by Chef Lees. Uh, specifically from KBEV, uh, we had eight students in broadcast news production, uh, and two in radio production and one in job demonstration. Uh, broadcast news production is a, uh, three-minute newscast, uh, where we, uh, produce or, or students produce a, a newscast based on a given prompt, which is given by, uh, the, the National Committee and Organization by, uh, from the organization. And audio and radio production is a similar styled, uh, event, uh, where students create a five-minute NPR styled, uh, podcast based on a given prompt. This is also unique cuz, uh, students have 24 hours, uh, to produce all the way from the beginning to produce, uh, come up with a script, uh, their ideas, uh, grab interviews and, uh, to formulate the final product. Uh, job demonstration is, uh, where students have five to seven minutes, uh, where they demonstrate their professional skillsets depending on, uh, the categories they participate in. Uh, I'm so proud to continue this program cuz, uh, this program, we, we've been, uh, participating for the last seven years and KBEV, uh, in particular, have been receiving gold medals, uh, seven consecutive years from both regional and state level competitions. And we are so excited to bring the same kind of, uh, professionalism and our just amazing results, uh, of, uh, from our student producers. Uh, we have Akira, uh, Akira Carey, Sarah Horfar, Grace Suomi, and Lila Rukim, uh, placing golden, uh, or first place in broadcast news production. And, good job you guys. And we have Natalie Gold, uh, Gabby, uh, Gabby Gachi, Natasha Dadiulahi, and Kobe Galardian, uh, placed fourth place in broadcast news production. And we have, thank you. Good job you guys. Not, not, uh, last but not least, we have Tiffany Bahari and Matthew Nicknam placing fifth place in radio and audio production. So kudos to them. And, uh, before I hand over to, uh, Kobe and Sarah, who participated in broadcast news production to just talk about their experience, uh, I would like to sincerely thank, uh, Mr. Carey and Ms. Dubin, our amazing CTE, uh, coordinator at the high school, um, for, uh, continuing this amazing event and supporting us, um, year after year. So thank you so much. And with that being said, I'll have Kobe Galardian, uh, who actually joined our program, uh, a couple of years ago and now he is pretty much, uh, leading our entire, uh, media center all the way from our website management, all the way to the technical, uh, directing and management. So Kobe, uh, why don't you talk a little bit about your experience at the event?
Hi, my name is Kobe Galardian and I participated in the Skills USA Broadcast News category. Um, the experience I had attended was unlike any other. I was able to connect with my peers as well as learn about a field that I'm very passionate about. Um, I'm so thankful for being part of a school that enables me to have these opportunities. Um, I'm as well thankful for our teacher, Mr. Carey, and our CTE director, Ms. Dubin, uh, and our advisor, Ricky Lee. And I'm incredibly proud of my teammates for doing such a good job. So thank you for having us.
Hi, I'm Sarah Horfar and I'm in 11th grade. I'm a lead producer at KBEV Six and I've been doing Skills USA since freshman year. And I've honestly learned so much, all the way from learning how to work with my peers to how to professionally technical direct. I really gotta tap into my creative side and learn how to develop my skills in broadcast journalism as a lead producer by creating rundowns, formatting scripts, directing productions, and even learning how to perform well on interviews. Um, winning Gold at, uh, Gold at State was an amazing opportunity and my team and I are so excited for Nationals. I would a hundred percent recommend Skills USA to any student who is looking to go into the broadcast journalism field. Thank you to Mr. Carey, Ricky Lee, and Cindy Dubin and my team of course.
Thank you again Kobe and Sarah for sharing your experience. And again, I would like to thank, um, besides, um, Mr. Carey and Ms. Dubin, I would also like to thank the Board of Education for supporting our program as well with our, um, amazing amount of, uh, funding for our program. We truly appreciate that. Um, and this, uh, and these students are the ones who are producing all the newscasts and the, the productions that, uh, everyone on, uh, tuning into KBEV Six's YouTube channel and on Spectrum Cable Six. Uh, all the way from the open house shows to Norman News, the Norman Update. These guys work in day in, day out. Trying to bring the best of our community and trying to, uh, pretty much show what our, uh, community in Beverly Hills High can, uh, produce. So thank you so much again for, uh, listening and, uh, I'll introduce Ms. Cindy Dubin, um, so she can talk about, uh, the culinary program. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. That's a hard act to follow. And really, my favorite thing is just letting our students speak for our programs, our students and our alums. Um, hi, everyone. I'm Cindy Dubin, uh, Career Education Coordinator. Um, I'm an attorney. This is a second career for me and I love coming to work every day. And, um, creating and helping to create wonderful, um, opportunities for our kids. So I look forward to coming to do, in the fall, to maybe do a full presentation on all of our programs, but tonight I couldn't help but take the opportunity just to mention that because of the tremendous support from PTA and VHF and the board and our site administration and our purchasing department and our custodial staff, our CTE programs and pathways are soaring. We use the pandemic time to outfit a state-of-the-art recording studio. We have a tremendous new fashion lab that houses sewing machines for 2025 students with European models. We have grant funding. We have district funding. We put everything together and it, it takes a village to make it happen and, but if you have people from the top saying yes, that we can do these for our students, that really, um, it's, the, the sky's the limit and we're just getting started. It's really thrilling. So a few highlights beyond the facilities, um, and besides our fashion pathway, we now have three courses. We have a business pathway. We have robotics, um, and then the other ones that have been mentioned, night media. Thank you, Mr. Carey, for all of your incredible work that you do day in and day out with the kids. And one of the, one of the 11, uh, kind of, um, components of any outstanding career education program is competitions. And I love going to competitions. I'm a very competitive person. I think they teach the kids so many things, from learning to be on time, learning how to read instructions carefully, learning to find out where you're going before you need to be there. You know, if you're on time, you're late. If you're early, you're on time. Those basic, uh, lessons. And so tonight, it's very fitting, uh, since Chef Rick Lees, who runs an enormously dynamic program day in and day out, six sections every day. It's tremendous. Um, he couldn't be here tonight, so I'm really lucky to get to talk about our culinary program and, um, our participants at, in Skills USA and culinary. So first, I'd like to introduce, um, Ms. Regina Bugarren to come say a few words.
Hi, my name's Regina Bugarren and I'm a current senior at Beverly. And I've been part of a culinary program for four years now and it's 1,000% been the best decision I've ever made. It led me to, um, well, it's helped me discover my incredible passion for cooking and baking. And it just led me to commit to the Culinary Institute of America, New York. And and I'm so grateful for that and all the opportunities I've had in this, these four years of high school. And I'm so grateful for Chef Lees for teaching me everything he knows and for giving me his passion for cooking and putting it into me. So I'm very thankful for that.
And so Regina won, last year won for, second place at regionals and this year, she, fourth place and then fourth place in the state of California. Congratulations. And then we have one other student who's not here tonight, but I wanted to recognize Seema Arslan. She, uh, came in, I don't remember what at regionals, but she won first place at the state. And what that means now, along with the four broadcast students who came in first, is that they are now part of the state of California Skills USA team. So we go to Atlanta at the end of June and we are, they, the kids and our two teachers represent the state of California. Um, we stay in certain, the, certain states stay in certain hotels. This is our first time going to Atlanta. It'll be really exciting. So, um, we've, uh, reached out to hotels, business partners in town, the Peninsula, Beverly Hilton, to have their chefs hopefully work with Seema and get her prepared cuz she's gonna be competing against students who actually go to hospitality magnet schools. Um, when I, when I went to Louisville a few years ago and watched the culinary competitions, cuz we had a student in it, it's really astonishing that our kids can hold their own in our programs here with students who spend five or six hours in those, their craft alone a day and then work in academics after. So it speaks volumes for the opportunities that you all and Dr. Bregy and Mr. Seaman back there. Thank you so much. I love working with everyone. And thank you for being such fabulous young people and really, uh, represent our school so well. Thank you.
I'm just gonna go around so everyone can comment before you guys leave. Don't leave yet. Um, I just think that, you know, we'd love an opportunity just to talk about how great your program and how, congratulations on all of your awards and your hard work. It's really fantastic, the CTE program, and thank you Cindy for all that you do and everybody that participates and has helped to create this program. This is such a unique, um, and incredible program that we offer at the school. And I, I wish that everybody knew about it more and I'd like us to be able to communicate that out to the community even more so because it, we see it all the time and you guys are incredible and certainly we appreciate KBEV and a, all of the production value and I know that many times myself, if I wanna know what's going on in school, I'll go on and watch the Norman Update and to, it's, you know, see what's happening. So, thank you very much and I'll just let everybody go around.
These programs in our CTE department are really something very special. I actually very, like, uh, earlier this morning, I had someone ask me, what is the one class you regret not taking in your four years? And my, immediately culinary. That was always something that I've wanted to take. I was always jealous seeing people walk out of that class with plates of hot food and pastries and I was always one of the people begging them to give me just a little piece. Um, so I just know how fantastic our programs are and just how special they are to our students. I mean, I get a small taste of what KBEV has to offer when I'm able to go and film the, the Norman Update or when I'm, uh, involved in one of their skits, like for the, the Casp testing recently, which was a lot of fun to make and just to, to see how much fun they have while learning so much is really something very special that is not offered to, to all students. So it's, it's, it's fantastic that we have programs like this and the success of our students is a testament to how great these programs really are. And, uh, something that wasn't explicitly mentioned, but it's that, uh, no one at home would be able to see us right now if it were not for these students here and our KBEV program. So, we have a lot to thank them for, uh, and a lot to, to recognize them for.
Thank you, Eli. I'd like to just compliment everybody that participated, win, lose, or draw or show. Those of you that didn't make it to the finals, but many of you did compete and I wanna congratulate all of you that competed at the levels that you competed at. Uh, I agree with you about the cooking class. I understand that's one of the toughest classes to get into. It's a standing room only and for those of you that get in and, uh, make it, I think it's wonderful. I'd just like to say one more thing that this wonderful opportunity that you're getting here at Beverly this wonderful opportunity that you're getting here at Beverly Hills High School is giving many of you tastes of things that you might want to go on to in the future. And I think it sets the road, the path for you, especially I heard about the young lady, I believe her name is um, Regina is going to go to culinary school in New York. Mazel tov. Congratulations. That's wonderful. And I just want you to know that I always am envious of all you kids that come in here with a CTA and ZTE. And you do such a great job in all the areas that you go into. So, good luck to you all and I wish you well. Thank you for coming tonight.
I won't, I, I won't repeat all the things that my colleague said. I'm just so proud that we're tapping into the passions of our students at earlier ages so they can figure out where their calling is. I mean, that's what it's all about and then we're giving them skills to go. But it's so easy as a student to not engage, right? And you guys are the ones that have leaned in and taken advantage of the programs you have in front of you. So, congrats to all of you. I'm, I'm so proud on how accomplished you guys have been so far. You're just scratching the surface. You guys are all going to accomplish amazing things. So, just, thank you guys.
I want to congratulate each of you as individuals for your achievement, but also working as a team because that is another skill that you guys are working on and navigating and it's not easy. And I also agree with Ms. Dubin that um, going to competition requires a lot of, let's say, micro skills, right? Being on time, planning. Um, of course, your parents have a lot of planning too, by the way, you know, to get you there and park and whatever, but um, just know that. But um, I, very impressive and again, I, I just am so proud to be part of this community where we have incredible offerings that I don't see at other schools. Um, and in part, we have to thank the adults, the staff, the teachers uh, for, you know, doing such a great job and having the passion. It's clear that you have that passion. Um, and I, I also want to thank uh, both public and private benefactors for some of these. And I'm very happy that, you know, the audio production is, is fairly new and I know that um, there's just a lot of enhancements that uh, we benefit as a school and I'm grateful truly. Thank you.
Don't want to keep you here much longer. KBEV, you guys are always my kin. You guys know that. And it's, except your cameras are so much smaller, you know, it took us two people to carry our camera and deck. You're lucky. Um, and they're just going to get smaller from there. And um, culinary, it's remarkable. My daughter's in culinary and I haven't had a bite of anything all year because nothing ever comes home. Oh, we ate it. We ate, nothing, nothing. And then of course, I cook today. I don't want to cook tonight. I get nothing. So, I've heard it's a wonderful program, but I have not tasted that it's a wonderful program. There are five senses Reese, five of them. Thank you. Thank you all. Congrats.
Well, we know where you can get a food truck when you're ready. All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Um, next we have accommodations and recognition and I'd like to call up Elena Castanon, please.
Oh, we have the
Oh, I'm sorry. I see.
Ms. Dotus.
Yeah. Actually Elena, wait one moment wherever you are. And we're going to call up Farah. Farah Dotus.
So, and as Farah comes up, I want to uh, just give a, a, a quick shout out. We were in conversations um, several years ago about making this a reality and uh, the time, effort and work and dedication that you and um, BHF has put into this is kind of an inaugural start for us. Thank you for this great kickoff that we know will continue into the future.
That makes me sound very fancy. Um, but really, I mean, thank you. It, it was really through the conversations that we decided to bring the innovative teacher grant program back. I guess we had a grant program previously. It had kind of, you know, uh, gone by the wayside, but um, we're really excited to bring it back because we did want to provide funding and support to teachers and certificated staff who have, you know, interesting ideas they wanted to uh, follow through on. And um, you know, the, the important points that we wanted to touch on were um, to address a need. If teachers felt like, teachers and certificated staff felt like they needed to address something that wasn't being addressed in our district already. Um, we wanted things that were replicable, so possibly usable across different um, disciplines or also school sites. Scalable so that, you know, you could start small, but also, you know, go, go large. And also to um, address our strategic plan because it is very important that we, you know, keep following that, that path and, and, and keep accomplishing more. So, without further ado, I'm not the one here to be focused on. Very excited to introduce these teachers and certificated staff. Um, we're going to start with, uh, first we'll start with Lisa Beeler, who is the TOSA I four coach at Horace Mann. She is doing a hands-on computing program this year, which is phenomenal. The kids love it. And then we will be followed by um, Katina Valance and Marissa Long at BVMS. And they launched and supported the uh, web program, which is, stands for where everybody belongs. Excuse me. Thank you.
All right. So, uh, can everybody hear me? All right. So, the program that we, that I started with the help of BHF is a Piper build, like physical building, a computer. And this is something that was really kind of outside of my comfort zone. So, it challenged me as well because most of my experience has been with educational technology software. And so, I felt like it was time for me to move into actual physical computing. And uh, we, I've, I've done the club with second graders and with fifth graders. And I asked two of my wonderful fifth grade students to um, to do a little presentation. Oh, but act, okay. Sorry, sorry. I am not a good public speaker at all. Um, so what a Piper kit is, it's a laser cut kit that the students assemble and it actually is a functioning computer. It's probably more powerful than a room full of nineteen seventies computers that maybe sent missions to the moon. So, they would assemble all these components and uh, I'm going to pass this, pass this down. And you can see where it starts and where it finishes.
Goodne- good evening, V, VHUSD board and Dr. Breggy. We are Alan Yektofer.
And Keegan Wamsley. We are fifth graders at Horace Mann.
I'm here today to talk about my experience with Mrs. Beeler's after-school class building a Piper computer that was sponsored by BHF.
We used a blueprint. We used a blueprint to build our Piper computer from laser cut wood components. Its brain is a Raspberry Pi microprocer- processor.
The Piper is a working computer with display, with the, the display, speaker and mouse.
Once assembled, we went on a Minecraft adventure solving missions by cir- with, by building circuits with jump wires, buttons and LEDs.
My favorite mission was building the computer and the challenges we overcame along the way. Mrs. Beeler would also help us whenever we didn't understand how to complete prob- problems.
My favorite part is when we built the computer because it was fun building something in a, with wood in a computer class. It was an amazing experiments with many opportunities. This is a class I will never forget.
Something that was challenging was completing the world like Cheese Droid because we needed to find parts in the world that we couldn't, could not find. But as I would, but as I always say, I love a good challenge.
Something I found challenging was installing a buzzer on some of the many worlds we completed. One world treasure hunt, we had to apply an LED light to the breadboard of, but our LED light did not work, so we had to find the treasure without the light.
After fin- after we finished the missions, the final part was to take the Piper apart and store it for other students to use.
Thank you BHF for giving Mrs. Beeler this opportunity to have this program.
In addition, I'd like to fi- thank Ed Services and the Board for supporting the Makerspace programs at the elementary schools. It really has made a difference to have kindergarten or not kindergarten, second graders come in, be able to handle tiny nuts and bolts and screwdrivers. Really is a testament to the work that, that is being done by Ms. Bozen and Ms. Kramer. So, thank you, thank you all for supporting that. We really appreciate it.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Marissa Long and I am um, one of the co-teachers of the new web class at Beverly Vista Middle School. It's my ninth year in the district. I know many of you. I've had some of your children. Um, and we're here to talk to you guys about uh, the wonderful gift that BHF granted us this year and our program.
Hi, everyone. I'm Katina Valance. Um, and yes, I am the other co-teacher if you couldn't figure that out. I'm the other co-teacher of web this year. Um, WEB stands for where everybody belongs. Um, it is a new program um, at BVMS this year. It has previously been in the district, um, but it's new to us at BVMS. As Farah mentioned, um, this is something that um, we felt like was a need that was not being fulfilled. WEB is a mentorship and leadership program and uh, we take eighth grade, hand-chosen eighth grade leaders and train them to be mentors to incoming sixth graders. There's a lot of research that has shown that the transition to middle school can be quite stressful and academics and social, uh, social emotional wellbeing really suffer because of it. And WEB, which is um, uh, given to us by the Boomerang Project, um, is a program that addresses that. Um, so we have some students with us and they're going to talk about um, some of the projects that we've done in WEB so far. WEB is definitely in its infancy this year, so we've kind of had this extra bonus year to really kick things off. And so, we're looking forward to kind of where it's going to go from here. So, we'll introduce to you Evollette Austin.
Oh, uh, first we want to introduce uh, the way we introduced WEB to our staff and to the community. Um, with a, a student-produced video explaining what WEB is, the philosophy behind it and um, what brings it to uh, BVMS for the first time.
That was my whole job, introducing that video.
We'll try to fix that while um, we introduce some of our students. So, I'll try to fit, give permission to that. But first, let me introduce Evollette Austin, who's going to talk to you about um, our kickoff event, which was Kindness Day.
Hi, um, I am Evollette Austin and I am one of the web students. We did an event called For Kindness Day, for, or we did an event and it was for Kindness Day. We did kindness cards. And we set up tables around the school campus, handing out kindness cards to kids so they can write kind letters to their peers. And they, and we gave it out during advisory. Um, so we gave out over one thousand cards to kids over the, around the campus. And um, we also handed out pins at the beginning of school and it was a very successful event and kids loved it.
Hello. My name is Naomi Asui and I'm in seventh grade in WEB at BVMS. So, let's talk about the WEB cultural board. So, this is a board we did about every month highlighting cultures such as Black History Month, Asian American and Pacific Islanders Month, Jewish History Month and more. Uh, so with the portion of the grant money we were given, students were able to get decorations to decorate the board to sort of uh, give a visual representation of each culture. And uh, we put like pictures, uh, we printed out slides. Uh, we can put like famous celebrities from that culture or foods and many more things. And I personally really like that we did this because it can really broaden the minds of students to the many cultures of the world. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nima Farinad and I'm here to talk about the orientation. And so, this is the huge project of WEB. And this is the big thing. You see, every day in WEB, we uh, practice orientation and what we do. So, what do we do in orientation? In the beginning, we give an entire tour of BVMS, which wasn't given in the previous years. After that, we play activities with the children so that they can better know each other. Uh, and yeah, it's great.
Um, and I think we got the video working. So, this is how we introduced ourselves to our um, staff. Hi, I'm Hi, I'm Mrs. Long.
And I'm Ms. Valance.
And we're the web coordinators.
We're here today to introduce you to WEB, where everybody belongs.
The transition to middle school can be overwhelming and daunting for a young person. Because the move to middle school can be overwhelming and scary, sixth grade students often experience lower academic achievement and difficult social adjustment in their transition. While all teachers want to help, we noticed that there were very few substantial strategies set in place to help our sixth graders navigate their new middle school. So, BVMS decided to change that and we introduced WEB. WEB stands for where everybody belongs. WEB is an orientation and transition program where we have eighth grade students serve as leaders and mentors to incoming sixth graders. The program addresses three primary elements, safety, information and connection with our sixth graders. We put in place a structure where sixth grade students get the necessary support to successfully navigate this transition and start their middle school experience on a positive note. Our new sixth grade students will spend a day alone on campus before school starts with their eighth grade leaders in fun team-building activities throughout the day. While on campus, orientation day also includes preparation for day one. Students will learn where to go, where their lockers are, all without the hesitancy or anxiety that comes with the first day of school. We really love Beverly Vista Middle School. So, come make new friends and help us create a school where kindness rules. Keep an eye on your inbox and look out for save the date in the spring for summer orientation. So, some of those um, students featured in that last video are our members here with us that decided to take the leap of faith with Katina and I. And um, I was actually really happy to see that some of the students that were receiving acknowledgements were web leaders at Hawthorne. Hawthorne was the first school to have WEB. Um, someone named Michelle Dar brought it to our school. And um, I led that program there and absolutely fell in love with it. So, coming off of a pandemic experience that was really traumatizing for a lot of our students, this is going to be a very cool opportunity for us to sort of reset and start over because we haven't had that opportunity before yet. And because WEB is the middle school version of a program that already exists at the high school, which is Link Crew, this is sort of like a natural pathway for student leaders to start at the middle school level and to continue those leadership skills um, as they go to the high school. Um, and we want you to hear from these amazing little humans as to why they decided to take the leap of faith with us. Katina and I love students and love kids. That's why we're teachers. Um, they didn't have to join. They wanted to. They're going to tell you why.
Hi, and I'm Nima Farinad, as you know. And so, the reason why I joined WEB is because it was sort of like an outlet to
Well, first of all, I'm blown away by, and I'm so thrilled to see that this is an innovative, both of these programs are innovations that have come from the BHEF through their grants to teachers to develop new programs, and this is an amazing thing. I have a couple of questions on this. Number one, Web, when do you meet during the school day? I mean, to plan all this, is this a class? Is this an elective?
Yeah, it is an elective. We currently meet period five, if you ever want to join us. But yeah, we're lucky enough to have it as a full-time class. There are schools that do it as clubs, but really, they really stress that to really make this program work, it's a five-year development process, so it's really five years from now that we expect to see the full impact of it, but they say if you're really going to get it, it's got to be a class, and so we were lucky enough to get that.
Okay, next question.
Yeah, to add to that, Ms. Marcus, this is, Orientation is just part one of many parts. So, Katina and I attended a three-day intensive, 12 hours per day training session, and in the fall next year, we'll also attend a follow-up. Part of the program also involves our student leaders pushing into sixth grade advisories, which is our version of study hall, and delivering different lessons to help them develop not only as academic students, but as social beings. So, we do academic follow-ups, we do social follow-ups, and really, they are their people for that first year of middle school. And because we are consolidated, and just like you said, this is sort of like the first time we've completed an entire year at BVMS, so to be able to sort of start with a really cool new perspective and a new culture-building strategy is exciting. So, it won't end at Orientation, it begins at Orientation.
A second thought on my mind was that this is for the incoming sixth graders, but supposing you get new seventh or eighth graders coming in, I hope you have something in line for them, so that they also feel like they belong.
We absolutely do. Every time the counseling department calls us for a student tour, they fight over who's going to get to do it. So yes, those support systems are also in place, not just for new students, but, excuse me, new sixth graders, but new students as they come into our district, because they start at erratic times sometimes.
It's really cool, too. So many of our Web leaders speak different languages.
Yeah.
And so, we've been getting students from all over the world this year, and you know, we'll have the counselor call and say, "Do you have a Russian speaker?" And Evahlet is our Russian speaker, and so we send her right down, and there she goes. So, we have so many languages represented, which is great, when we have a student that comes to a brand-new school, that someone can speak to them in their language and say like, "Here's the tour," in a way that you can understand. So, it's really cool.
Okay, now for the other group of people. I have questions for the people who made the computer. So, is this a class also, or is this something that goes on? And I know this is almost like the Makerspace-type of program where the kids, so this is another, is there a class, or is it?
Yes, it is an after-school class, so after school, on a certain day of the week, we would all meet up in a certain classroom after school, and we would all build our computers and do missions.
That's really dedication, because that's after-school time, and I really love that idea, so that's terrific. One other question I was going to ask, you're at Horseman, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a similar program at Hawthorne for this?
We're not sure if there's a similar class at Hawthorne that's like this, but we would suggest that they do it, because we really enjoy doing this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I love both of these, and I think it's wonderful. Thank you for allowing me to throw some questions in.
I'll start with the computer building. I remember a couple of months ago, I think I reported on it in my board report at some point, I got to see pictures of you guys working in the classroom, it was really fantastic, and I'm really happy to see you here succeeding even beyond what I could have ever imagined. So, it's definitely a fantastic program. Raspberry Pis, you'll definitely see a lot in the future, we use them in robotics today to help with our vision tracking on our robots, so it can essentially determine what it needs to do by the click of a button, so they're very powerful machines. Getting a start with one now is fantastic, and it's amazing to see what you guys have done with it.
And to piggyback on that, I'm a Piper creator, where I help Piper test new products and develop lessons for teachers, and they do have a sensor kit that adds on to this. There's a temperature, a color, and a distance sensor, so you know, hopefully that, you know, we get these kids who go through the program, start robotics, and then by the time they end up in high school, they'll be that much more successful.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much. And for Web, I was going to beat me to saying that we have a similar program at the high school, but this seems to be much more in-depth than anything that we do. It's really fantastic. I mean, our Link leaders are lucky to get a week working and prepping, and to see that you guys have a class almost every day is really something special, and you can really provide a better environment for those students, and it is something that will go with you. I mean, I've heard a couple of times that the college I'm attending next year has a similar program, they're called PALS, Peer Advising Leaders, so I'll get paired up with an upperclassman who then is a resource for me for the whole year, which will definitely help with the transition, and I'd even say that the transition from fifth grade to sixth grade is probably bigger than the transition from high school to college, so it's even more critical to have it there. So, thank you for all that you do and for the time that the students give to it.
I'm so bummed we didn't have these programs in place when I went to school there, but I'm so glad and so proud that we have them now. So, thank you to BHEF, thank you to these amazing teachers. The Web program sounds incredible. Thank you to our student leaders for, you know, kind of taking advantage of this opportunity, but also just stepping up. You could be doing so many other things and taking other classes, but you are creating a warm environment for the students that are coming after you, and that's just incredibly meaningful. Quick story, I remember I went to the school on a permit program, and so I frequently started school at the time, I started school on day two or day three. So, it's like I was coming in, new school, and then I started after everyone else already, and there was nothing like this in place. So, this is like, I mean, like I get emotional thinking, it was so overwhelming. So, to have something like this in place is incredible. And then, working with Raspberry Pis, building computers, I mean, it's absolutely unbelievable, and these tools that you guys are using are tools that you will encounter, right, when you work in a technology companies. I mean, I think it's incredible that you guys are getting the head start that you guys are getting. Thank you to the students for taking advantage of this, staying after school, it says a lot about you guys that you guys are doing this. So, bright things ahead for all of you guys, I know it. Thank you. And thank you to BHEF as well.
I think that there are a lot of community members who aren't exactly sure what BHEF is, right? Because there's a lot of organizations that have a BH, but if they were unclear, I hope they are now clear that BHEF does a lot of great things, and this is clearly money put to good use. And Farah Dotis, I am very grateful to you for your stewardship of that. Yes. I want to, I don't know if you guys are aware, but over the next couple of years, there's going to be an influx of three- and four-year-olds. I don't know how that strikes you, but it's just a thought, it would be great if there were some sort of introduction to either their parents or something that's, you know, kid-friendly for that population. I think one thing that the pandemic gave us perhaps is a new appreciation for how we can fine-tune videos and media to really reach out to different ages of children. But I'm very happy with what I've seen, and it's a great use of technology and empathy and social-emotional learning and a lot of things that we care about at the school, so thank you.
Great job, all of you. I would say that in our position, we don't always get to hear about students making the right choices, and to hear about your students choosing to do the right thing by doing this and being available is refreshing, so thank you.
All of you, excellent, awesome speakers. You know, I just want to point out something, I got a little choked up about four or five years ago in this very room, we talked a lot about the R-word, which was reconfiguration, and we talked a lot, hours and hours, about that it's so much more than just reconfiguration, it's about building a place, a sense of belonging, deep-rooted in middle school philosophy. And then to see this tonight, I got so choked up, because the sense of belonging built by students is exactly what we said four and five years ago to our community, that this is the type of school that we were building. And so, thank you for that program tonight that just demonstrates how important these programs are. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Okay. Is Elena Kassanon here? She is? Oh, there she is. Hi. Come on up. Elena is the BATF president, newly re-elected, or nominated, I'm not sure, re-elected. Tonight, we are going to read, I'm going to read this resolution and then, for Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas the teacher educators of the Beverly Hills Unified School District work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and the utmost professionalism, and whereas our teachers shape and influence young lives for a lifetime through their guidance and instruction, as well as by example. And whereas the future success of our children depends on the dedicated and conscientious instruction provided by teachers and other educators, and whereas the teachers profession collectively remains one of our noblest and most vital professions, and whereas the love of learning and the desire for excellence that our teachers impart to their students is the key to a bright and successful future. And whereas our essential, certificated staff have demonstrated commitment, perseverance, and a tremendous amount of flexibility throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, and therefore, let it be resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education wishes to honor and thank teachers for their diligent, dedicated efforts to ensure all children have a quality education. Be it further resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education encourages all communities to work together to honor teachers by proclaiming Teacher Appreciation Week in the Beverly Hills Unified School District this year, to be from May 2nd through May 6, 2022, in honor of the district's exceptional teaching staff, whose excellence, talent, and expertise have enabled this district to maintain a program of quality education. May I have a motion for approval of this resolution?
Sure. I move to approve Resolution Number 2021-2022-025, National PTA Teacher Appreciation Week.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Dr. Stern. I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Eli Raymer. You want to do it?
Beautiful.
Thank you so much. If you guys can shuffle just to this corner, that would be great.
Shouldn't you turn it out? Yeah.
But why? Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. And to all of our teachers. Absolutely. May we have Adelphi Kaboo, Carol Cornea, and Calvin Riddle? I'm going to read the resolutions. This is a resolution for our Classified School Employee Week. Whereas the classified staff of the Beverly Hills Unified School District contributes significantly to the outstanding educational programs available in our district and are the heartbeat of our schools, and whereas the classified school employees are crucial partners with teachers, parents, and administrators in the Beverly Hills Unified School District, and whereas the classified staff is involved in every aspect of education, including maintaining school buildings and grounds, providing secretarial and clerical assistance, preparing and serving meals, assisting in the classroom, and many other specialized services, and whereas these dedicated individuals deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they are doing, and whereas our essential classified staff have demonstrated commitment, perseverance, and tremendous amount of flexibility throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education does hereby proclaim Classified School Employee Week in the Beverly Hills Unified School District from May 15 through May 21, 2022, and does hereby pay tribute to the diligence, loyalty, skill, and expertise of all classified employees.
I would like to make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2021-2022-26, the Classified School Employee Appreciation Week, May 15 through the 21, 2022.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Ms. Marcus and seconded by Eli Raymer. I'm going to call for an roll call vote. Eli Raymer?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
That's me, yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
And Mr. Margot?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. The motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Eli Raymer. Thank you. Do you want to hold it up? Do you want to hold both? Let's grab this.
We should grab it.
Yeah, I think we should.
It's for Adelphi.
Yeah, okay. Do you want some? Move. Move in this way. Uh-oh. There we go. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And to all of our teachers.
Absolutely. May we have Adelphi Kaboo, Carol Cornea, and Calvin Riddle? I'm going to read the resolutions. This is a resolution for our Classified School Employee Week. Whereas, this classified staff of the Beverly Hills Unified School District contributes significantly to the outstanding educational programs available in our district and are the heartbeat of our schools. And whereas, the classified school employees are crucial partners with teachers, parents, and administrators in the unified Beverly Hills Unified School District. And whereas, the classified staff is involved in every aspect of education, including maintaining school buildings and grounds, providing secretarial and clerical assistance, preparing and serving meals, assisting in the classroom, and many other specialized services. And whereas, these dedicated individuals deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they are doing. And whereas, our essential classified staff have demonstrated commitment, perseverance, and tremendous amount of flexibility throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education does hereby proclaim Classified School Employee Week in the Beverly Hills Unified School District from May 15th through May 21st, 2022, and does hereby pay tribute to the diligence, loyalty, skill, and expertise of all classified employees.
I would like to make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2021-2022-26, the Classified School Employee Appreciation Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2022.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Eli Raymer. I'm going to call for an roll-call vote. Eli Raymer?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
That's me. Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
And Mr. Margot?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. The motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Eli Raymer.
Oh, yes. I will accept it on Adolfo's.
Thank you. Do you want to hold both?
No.
Let's grab those.
We should grab it.
Yeah, I think you should.
It's for Adolfo.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, everybody.
Okay, we are now at the public comment period. The first person that we are going to call up is Myra Lurie and Rex Wilder. Myra Lurie, in case you didn't know, is a former board member.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
President Wells, Dr. Bregge in board. And as you said, Myra, this is Rex Wilder. I am here, we're here together representing the Maple Counseling. And I'm presently the Chair of the Board, and Rex is co-Vice President. And we are just here simply to say thank you. And as there is a matter on our agenda today, on our consent agenda, where the district will hopefully re-up with Maple Center and renew the contract, this contract, I just wanted to point out, calls for increased hours for Maple to provide services to the middle school, which I have to just tell you, as a former board member, gives me such pleasure and such delight to watch all the wonderful things you're doing for your students. I was here before the reconfiguration, always wanted the reconfiguration, and seeing in person these tremendous programs and your wonderful students and dedicated teachers is just delightful. And to that end, this wonderful partnership that Maple is so very, very proud of and so grateful to you for having, is a partnership which, again, meets the needs of your students, in this case, further, as I said, for middle school. But I really just wanted to salute every one of you for recognizing the needs. And right now, the social, the emotional, and the mental health needs of all of us are so critical. But as the New York Times pointed out just today, a few hours ago, this country is in crisis when it comes to the mental health issues that are being experienced by our adolescents and our teens in particular, and all of our children. We all know how important it is. So, this is an increase in our partnership, an increase in the services that we are so pleased to provide to the district. And we just wanted to say thank you. And a special shout-out to Dr. Bregge, who is an ex-officio member of our board, and he always comes, no matter how busy this guy is, he always makes those meetings. And we so appreciate the partnership and the leadership that's demonstrated here. And Rex, do you want to say something?
I'm just very proud to be a part of this. This is, I went to Beverly Vista before, I'm a Hawthorne graduate and a Norman, 1974, almost 50 years. And when I came to the board of the Maple Center, I got to be a part of Community Circle and seeing what's happening. I don't know, are you all familiar with Community Circle? It's too long a story, but basically, volunteers go into the schools, everyone sits on the floor, and they talk about mental health issues, but bullying, or what happens at home. They really start kids thinking about how they can be, how they can deal with the things that later become such serious issues. And I was very proud to see it and very proud to be a part of it now that we're making it larger. Is that the music we have to get off?
This is the music of the Academy Awards. Anyway, thank you very, very much. And congratulations.
Thank you for coming. Next, we'll hear from Selena Elite, the VP of CSEA.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mine will be brief. Hopefully, it won't be three minutes. I'm actually here really to present, I am the new VP for the CSEA. So, I'm new at everything, but I'm also narrowing in with the playground, the playground aides. I'll give you a little history. I did work for Hawthorne for over a decade as a classified aide, and I worked with Carol and I sat on the board. So, I kind of have a little picture about how things go when it comes to the classifieds. Right now, now, we're the, supposedly, the safety net people, although yet, we're the underdogs, where nobody thinks about how important our job is. And I do it every day. I do it well. I appreciate it. I love it. I love the kids so much. So, I'm back at Hawthorne now again on a level of playground aides. So, what I want to address is just, you know, their pay scale and their hourly wage, and how we're there all day, and yet there's an hour break here, an hour break there. Some people go to school, some people they're looking at as a full-time job, but yet it's not a full-time pay. And we just want the board to look at that and consider that. And I think, like I said, no one's really stepped up in the playground position. And now that I'm there and I'm walking it, I'm like, well, what's going on? What can we do? So, just real quick, because I have a little over a minute, what I'm looking at is the holiday eligibility and what that means in the Article 11.4.2, which is about their pay when we're on winter break and spring break. And it's, now that I stepped in, a lot of my peers and coworkers have said, well, what are we going to do? Who's going to address that? When are we going to talk about it? Because it's a 10-month pay. And so, what do we do after that? And do we want our aides to come back regularly? Because the kids look forward to it. So, it's really about us and the kids, you know? Do we want somebody every year new and different? I don't think that that's fair to the community, to the kids, to all the schools. So, I'm here to speak on behalf of that and hope that you guys really take considerations as to what our pay scale is and what it looks like, and our dedication and hours that we're there, almost eight hours a day, but yet getting three and a half hours plus a little overtime, which could be a hit and miss and never considered. So, thank you so much and appreciate it. And I love Beverly Hills Unified School District. My kids went there. So, I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear me out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Eitan Aharon. And Eitan, you have three minutes.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Eitan Aharon. I'm a parent of my child. Two daughters, we attend Horaceman. And first, I would like to thank you for your leadership and congratulate you for the achievements and accomplishments. Dr. Bregge, thank you for everything you've done during the COVID to open the schools as early and separate and set Beverly Hills USD apart from other districts. And we are here to express our appreciation and at the same time to raise a valid concern that some of other parents that I spoke to were part of, and I wanted to bring it to your attention. And the problem has, the concern has three different layers. The first layer is about material to be shared with children in the sexual education, okay? This material has supplemental, some, some part of it is optional, kind of called, but from our understanding, it is going to be shared and with a lot of disturbing things. The first sentence of one of the presentations says, "Gender is something that many people think they understand, but they don't, most of people don't." And I don't think it's appropriate to share with fifth grader these things, as well as many other concepts that were not there as late as last year. So, some of, many of the topics, whether it's gender identity, LGBTQAI, HIV, which we understand the law, the law was in 2016, but things that were not there last year are there this year. So, that's the first layer. To add to that, the second layer of the problem is the lack of transparency. It was not shared with the parents. I might be the only person, maybe, that thinks like that. That's the beauty of our country, the freedom of speech, that we can express our opinion. I don't know how many parents are there sharing this concern with me or not, but at least it would be fair to share it upfront, transparent, say, this is what's going to be shared, and make your choice on an informed decision, and not just trying to sneak it out with a form. Okay, you want to sign in, go ahead, and you don't want to opt out, here is the form. No, nothing special, without even disclosing that any new topics were added. And lastly, it's about other incidents that I hear from friends, that it's not belong to, personally, to my kids' experiences, but in the Beverly High School, pushing personal agendas by teachers and staff of the school district, whether it's political or whether it's other agendas, to extend that students are feeling so uncomfortable that they ask to be excused and leave the classes. So, the purpose of my comment was just to bring it to your attention, because I know that as professionals who lead this committee and lead the education system here should be important for you to be aware and address it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Ralph Levy. Ralph, you have six minutes. We won't start until you get here.
I also wanted to say that I've been amazed at the things that this district's been able to do, Dr. Bregge and the board. And this is my first time here in person. I've really been amazed and feel so proud of all the people that have been presenting all our students. We do great things in Beverly Hills, but that also means we need to be able to talk about issues together, right? And that's what I'm going to talk about today. I'm going to talk about the same thing that's been talked previously, sex education. I'm the father of a fifth grader in Horaceman. Here's the excerpt from the email titled Sexual Health Curriculum Consent Form. HM Parents receive Tuesday, May 3rd, at 10:00 a.m., and I quote, "The sexual health portion will support families in teaching young people about sexual development, reproductive health, pregnancy, immunodeficiency virus, sexually transmitted diseases, infection. Both areas will focus on the refusal, negotiation, communication, and decision-making skills that promote health and well-being. Instruction will reflect the guidelines in the California Healthy Youth Act, Education Code, Section 51930 edsec. That looks very clear and straightforward and corresponding to what was in the Busy Bodies booklet that I received for my older child two years ago during COVID, at least up to page 32, which describes physical changes for boys and girls. This year, there have been sections added to the curriculum. Sexual orientation LGBTQIA+, which included the video title, "What is Sexual Orientation LGBTQ+?" Another video titled, "How to Be an LGBTQIA+ Ally?" Also, gender, that includes a video titled, "Gender Roles and Stereotypes", and another titled, "Range of Gender Identities." A whole supplemental information package that describes one, the different types of sexual orientation, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, inosex, asexual, those two, the same-sex relationship, three, sexual orientation stereotypes, for affirming gender, identity, gender expression, and the harm of gender stereotypes. None of these were openly disclosed in the email sent to HM Parents, I mentioned earlier, and were not included in the fifth grade section of the Health Education Content Standards for California Public School K-12 either. I will not even mention how this part of the course can shock parents and children, depending on what their personal or religious beliefs are. The students for this are 10 years old. How can the district think this content is even remotely appropriate for this age group and not even make a specific disclosure to parents? It's unbelievable. Obviously, these topics were not disclosed to parents in the consent request. And even though they are labeled as optional in the session, there is no option for the parents to opt out of this part of the course, as they have to accept the course in totality, on that alone. Most parents trust the school to do the right thing, and since the curriculum link was not included in the email mentioned earlier or the consent form, the parents had to request the materials or come to consult them at the main office. Was the district hoping that most parents would not go further than the email sent and not ask for more information, since we are also busy with life? I can't answer that question. However, I decided to request the course materials which were sent to me very quickly. Thank you, Mr. Simon. Now, adding this module without informing the parents directly and specifically during a class where kids are the most vulnerable, feel awkward, self-conscious, uneasy, and confused as their body starts going through changes they do not understand, is appalling. I feel betrayed, angry, and disgusted. Some parents may even say this is inoutrination as well. 10-year-old kids trust the teachers' words as truth, and teaching these concepts, which have nothing to do with academics, can be particularly harmful for the kids, for the parents' child relationship. This lack of transparency is shocking, and whether this board knew it or not is obviously responsible. There's no better way to lose parents' confidence. So, words without actions are meaningless. So, here are the next action steps I'm suggesting for parents. I'm bringing all five, both regulars' parents to read this curriculum and see whether they are fine with this and whether they should reconsider their consent, if they decided to grant it, since the deadline for the consent is today. The links are included in this form for ease of access. Two, vote, vote, vote for board members and over-elected officials at the county and state level who care and stand up for our kids and are transparent with parents. Our kids have a right to innocence and not to be exposed to topics that can only confuse them even more than they are as they enter puberty. For the district, I'm sorry, but you guys need to apologize during this board meeting to HM Parents for adding this age, personal, or religious belief in appropriate content to the sex ed course without a specific and detailed notification, when this content is not even part of the Health Education Content Standards for California Public School K-12. Two, remove the new sex, the new segments for the sex ed courses today. If the district wants it, propose a specific and optional LGBTQ+ and gender courses for parents who wish their 10-year-olds to attend, and detail the agenda so that things are clear. As a conclusion, I have to say that my trust in the board has been shaken by this as a parent. And this board has a real credibility issue on this topic, and when you had other topics that I spoke about before, like the COVID protocols and issues that were raised in terms of delays and overruns in terms of construction, I think it's time to make some change. We parents can help, and it's time to make us, to take us into consideration and start to have a real and meaningful dialogue, rather than monologues on each side. Board members, the ball is in your court, and it is more than time to start the back-and-forth and man-fencing. And to conclude, why not start today? I know that Mr. Simon is here, is probably going to respond to all of this, and he's right there. And so, why not try to have a sensical dialogue and back-and-forth between parents and the school, the school board and district? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to hear from Mahal Amir Salkin. I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you you have three minutes.
Oh, thank you. I don't think I'll need the whole three, but hello. Good evening, President Wells and the members of the board and the members of our district administration and the community. As many of you may know, I am an obstetrician-gynecologist. And I believe that it's very important for children who are at the threshold of puberty to learn about their bodies and to be prepared for the changes that they will be experiencing. The fifth-grade sex education curriculum has circulated in the community over the past few days. And so, I took the opportunity to review it. The Busy Bodies book is good. "A Simplified Yet Fairly Accurate Explanation of Puberty and How a Baby Is Made, Plus Practical Advice for Girls About Dealing with Menstruation." The AMaze videos varied in quality. I applaud the one on consent. A really good discussion of an important topic and totally fifth-grade appropriate. I will let the fifth-grade parents discuss whether sexuality and gender identity are appropriate topics for this age. I'm a gynecologist with teenage children, so I'm not living in that headspace. But the AMaze video about the signs of puberty in girls was not made in a way that supports young girls going through changes in their bodies. Pimples scaring the beast from Beauty and the Beast? Menstrual blood attracting a shark? Girls need to be brought through the awkwardness of their bodies Girls need to be brought through the awkwardness of their body changes into the power of their fertility, their ability to create new life. If you are assuming the responsibility of teaching our children, you need to do it with care and with love. So, please, please find something better for our girls before these classes start, and I offer my time to help you find that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mahal. We have Zoom speakers that we're going to hear from. The first is Sagali Sabag. And Sagali, you have six minutes. You're on mute.
Thank you. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Bregy. As our school year comes to an end, I would like to thank every one of you for your hard work and dedication, and most of all, thank you for hearing our pleas of concern as parents of your students. While we will be on summer break, all of you will continue to work hard on bringing back BHUSD status as a Blue Ribbon School and one of the best educational districts in the nation. During 1999 to 2000, and 2004 to 2005 school years, Beverly Hills High School was recognized with the Blue Ribbon School Award of Excellence by Education, the highest award an American school can receive. Newsweek ranked Beverly Hills High School as the 267th Best Public School, Best Public High School in the country. Our community wants this recognition back for the 2022 to the 2023 school year and beyond. It is imperative for each board member to pay very close attention to our community comments, especially in such times as we are living through today, educationally wise. The most detrimental aspect is the aspect of constant change being implemented with no input from the parents. Our students have not just been bombarded with the mandates in COVID-19, they are now being pushed with DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. In the Beverly Hills, Beverly Highlights dated March 14th, 2021, Dr. Bregy and Dustin Seaman stated that they are both planning to incorporate LGBTQ information both into the health and everyday curriculum at the high school and middle school as part of the district's new DEI initiative. I personally have family members and very close friends that are LGBTQ, that I truly love. As I personally relate to Dr. Bregy, it is not the school's responsibility to instruct gender identity, whether heterosexual or homosexual, especially in elementary, fifth grade, or middle school. It is inappropriate. BHUSD should always teach tolerance and anti-bullying, but not how you can and cannot feel towards certain gender, or how to use your body towards your feelings of different genders, or how you identify yourself. These classes can be optional for some students that may have difficulty with their own identity, and their parents can sign a consent for their children to attend the class. But to push it upon all of our students, whether the parents agree or not, is a far cry from the best school district in the nation. Keep in mind that the five of you, with the help of Dr. Bregy, are making decisions for approximately 3,300 students and families. By making the best decisions all of you can possibly make, you must listen to the families involved. You must put the students' education first, and should not rush it to judgment, just to keep up with the Joneses. Beverly Hills Unified School District is unique, and for this reason, we live here. Our instructional teachers have the highest credentials. Some parents do not speak out of fear of retaliation or being labeled. This is a disservice to their children. We, as parents, must speak up for our children and not stay silent out of fear. Our children, our children do not have a students' union. Our teachers do. Maybe someday our students will, but for now, the school board must negotiate with our students' parents and not ignore them. I would like to say that I have two children right now, out of all my children attending BHUSD. My one child finished fifth grade, she did not have any of the optional programs that I did read also in the sex ed class. I did opt for her to take it, because I do think it's important in understanding her body, but I do not agree with the optional. I have another student that will be attending the fifth grade, and I'm torn. I am strictly torn. And I'd also like to say really quickly that I truly enjoyed listening to the programs that are offered here at our school, and the students that have spoke this evening. It was just amazing. We love seeing the benefits of our students and teachers' hard work, super exciting. And we love our school, and we love our community, and the mental health issues is extremely important. So, we are here to help. Please reach out to us. You know, me personally, you can reach out anytime. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Reetu Ram. And you have three minutes. Okay, I'm going to move on. The next, the last person we'll hear from is Ashat Batia. Okay. All right, well, we are then finished with the public hearing period. May I have an approval for the, a motion for the approval of the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety, I think.
I will second the motion.
The motion was made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0 with a preferential vote from Mr. Raymer. And Pam? Mr. Margot had to step out for a little bit. Thank you. Okay, moving on, as superintendent report, are you ready, Dr. Bregy?
I am, thank you.
Terrific.
Just one second. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to share a report with you this evening. As you heard tonight already in our public comment, we have some exciting ceremonies that are coming up with our promotions at our elementary and middle school, and our graduation at BHHS. And so, these are just some commencement dates and times for you, so that our community can join us. Every year, we have the Apple Awards, which is a tradition in our school district, and an exciting time for us to be able to recognize our administrators, our certificated staff, also our classified staff. We did a little survey this year, because we wanted to get an idea from our staff, how they felt about the Apple Awards. We had overwhelming feedback about the program, and what we took away from the, the feedback from the survey was that, that we have an opportunity to be able to recognize more of our staff than just the individual Apple Award winners. So, we want to be able to respect the tradition of the program and be able to celebrate our Apple Award winners, as we have for decades in the school district. But we would also like to have an opportunity to recognize so many more staff members. As you have heard tonight, with our spotlight and our recognition opportunities, not just tonight, but throughout the year, this, this opportunity of incredible staff that are working in our school district. And so, this new program, which is the BHUSD Awards of Distinction, will give us this opportunity to be able to recognize more of our staff, and actually have more input from our staff. It's kind of the Academy Awards meets the People's Choice Awards. And so, we'll be excited to announce people who have won in categories by school, and we will capitalize on opening day, where that is the one day for the entire, entire school year, where all of our staff is present, and we're really excited to be able to have that opportunity. We are moving on with our Grandparent Day permits. We were really excited to bring up this program. As you can see in this slide, we have had a half-page ads in our three local papers. This was shared on our Instagram, the city's Instagram, and it really moved very, very quickly. We have one more day for the survey. The survey will close just in, just a day. We have over 185 responses already, and what we're going to do, starting tomorrow, when the survey closes, is really take that next step, because it's great that we have this, this opportunity to have 185 people that are responding, but we also want to take that next step, too. We know that people were very, very excited about this. But our next step is, are you, you know, so excited that you actually shared this with your children and where they live? So, as a follow-up to this information, and getting an interest, which was our first step, was to find out if those conversations are taking place, because we really want to get to a point now where we want to look at, you know, what that number of interested people are for this school year. We've talked to several people that have said, "We're interested, it's too close to this year, they would like to try something the following year." So, we'd like to be able to kind of differentiate that data, and so, tomorrow, with the survey closing, we're going to have that opportunity to be able to do that. We'd like to move this along, and we think that we will have this data ready for the board very soon, within the next few days. We'd like to even start planning for our next board meeting on May 24th, to bring to the board a first reading for a policy on our grandparent permit. Want to move into something I always talk about and I always share, so it's on our website, the dashboard for our active cases. Again, there's a slight uptick, we were aware of that, we expected that, and there is a new health order that's in place, and we continue, despite the uptick, we, we continue to do a really above and beyond job when it comes to the mitigation. And so, again, that's thanks to our, our families, to our teachers, and people in our schools that, that are holding true to the health orders that are in place. I wanted to share with you a very unique opportunity, and I, and I just love these opportunities that incorporate our community. And so, BVMS has reached out with the administration and the PTA at BVMS to do something called a Friend Raiser, and, and that is an opportunity to meet the neighbors, be in front of the school, have conversations about what's happening in our schools, whether you have students that are attending or not. You know, as you know, BVMS is planted right in the area where there are a lot of residents, whether they have students or not, and this gives us an opportunity to, to really meet the neighbors. So, we're looking forward to this, we're very excited about this. I love the innovation and the idea behind doing this. We have blanketed homes in the area so that they're aware of this opportunity, and I think it's just a pretty cool way to get to know your neighbors and to reach out to begin that dialogue. We're working with the city. May is Bike Month. If you didn't realize, we do have bike racks at each of our schools, so, you know, if you are tired of the, the carpool lines, you know, the bike is always an option, so I just wanted to point that out, that we're working with the city on riding bikes to school for the month of May. A really exciting opportunity for our students. That was a nice surprise that came into my office just yesterday, and this is our students who competed on the swim team and won the CIF Division 4 Championship on Saturday. You can see the amazing awards that they have won. Brandon Gabay, Gabrielle Graffstein, Luka Miyaki, Nathan Cho, Michael Egizarin, and also Harrison Smith. And so, we're going to bring these students to you for the next meeting, so that you can meet them in person. And also, a big thank you to their coach, Ahmad Hossain. Tonight, we are going to bring you another edition of our strategic plan, and we're excited to be able to do that. We are taking a little bit of an untraditional approach, so that the, the dialogue and the, the sharing of information from the administration becomes more of a vehicle for you to be, to see things in a visual way. Oftentimes, we're throwing out, as you know, acronyms here, acronyms there, programs here, and we want to be able to do something a little bit differently, and tonight, you're going to be able to see an opportunity with Mr. Ellis and, and Mr. Haas in just a few minutes. They are going to be able to give you an update, and again, it's a little bit different. Mr. David Damico did his update last board meeting for the strategic plan, and it was about, it was just over 30 minutes or so, and it was a pretty tough presentation to do via a, a visual way, because it's cybersecurity, and it was difficult to put on screen. I think that you're going to like tonight's, it's about 18 to 20 minutes, but it's a very quick and visual way to see what's happening in our strategic plan, so we're very excited to bring that for you in just a few minutes. This is kind of a lineup of our strategic plan, as we move on towards the end of the school year and into our summer, and we're excited to bring you these goal areas in the next few board meetings. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bregy. Eli, would you like to begin?
No questions from me. Thank you for the report.
I thank you again, Dr. Bregy. Great report, very comprehensive. I was just overblown by the fact that you had 185 or so comments. I assume I'm only going to ask, were they all positive, and that everybody's looking forward to it? I don't know, but that was a question that I had.
And that is our next step, so, because we did talk to a couple of people that were so excited that they forgot to ask their own children if they would be interested in sending their kids here, but they were certainly excited as grandparents. So, that's that next step now, is to find out what kind of conversations have taken place to, so that we can look at some real data for how this impacts our enrollment.
Thank you, Dr. Bregy, for the report. On the grandparents/legacy permit specifically, that's an area where so many community members have reached out to me personally, excited about the prospect of being able to welcome their, you know, grandchildren to the school district. So, I'm, I'm very excited to get that first reading on May 24th. I am curious, because this is a question that I've received, and it may be premature, so if you can't answer, you can't answer, but a number of members of the community have asked me if this is something that we are considering for the next school year, for 2022, 2023.
So, it's a great question. So, we are absolutely looking at this school year. That's why we'd like to be able to bring you the data, we'd like to bring you a first reading, so that we could begin this process for this school year. And, and it's interesting, in some of our conversations, because this has created quite the buzz in the community, even just grandparents that are walking by our district office that want to come in and ask us questions, and it's, and, and some people are looking for this school year, but some people have said that they would like to wait a year, some people have grandchildren that aren't eligible to be in school yet, so they're, it's kind of all over the place. So, what we're hoping is, this follow-up questioning that we do, starting tomorrow, we'll be able to kind of, you know, really narrow in on the, the number for our enrollment, but we are absolutely looking to begin registering students for the next school year, beginning in August.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm really excited to see the details on that program, understand it a little bit better. I think there's a lot of excitement around that, and I think I've made very clear my excitement just about having a version of a permit program again and expanding that. I think it's a great way to get new people in our community.
Can I just, just one thing you said, a quick question, a comment. You said grandparent legacy. This is not a legacy program, this is strictly grandparent permit, and it's not legacy, so I just wanted to, in case people are thinking about that, because we did once upon a time have a legacy program. This is strictly grandparent permit.
That, that is, yes, that is what we're considering. I look at it as another version of the legacy program. I look at it as another version of the legacy program that we had earlier. But yes, it is a grandparent.
Correct.
Grandparent program. I don't want to put you on the spot if we're not prepared to talk about it. But there was a lot of public comment around the, you know, the sex education program. I reviewed this earlier. I wasn't sure if that, if, if there's going to be a conversation about that at some point tonight. I'm, I'm happy to address it during my board communication. But I just wasn't sure if that was something that we were going to talk about.
So it's not on our agenda for tonight. I know that a board member has asked for further information about the program, so we can place that on our agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bregge.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. One comment that I would make about the grandparent permit. I'm very excited about it personally. I think it's great and really looking forward to seeing the results in more detail and how the program will work. But I did want to also just echo one thing that Gabe said, because I did have a few calls about parents that are current parents and families in the school. And I think a concern that I think we should dress, address head-on is, what does that mean for their classes? Are their classes, are they going to have more students in their class with their child? I think some parents are concerned that, you know, coming off of a year of COVID and, you know, trying to get a little more settled, that they're worried that having more students in the class will take away from being able to be focused on their child's learning experience right now, especially given what we've been through. So I think we need to address that.
Yeah, so I think that's an excellent question. And, and sometimes it's hard to, to understand if, if you're not looking at the, at how we register students and how we look at class sizes. In no way does this change the class maximums, that we're not increasing class sizes. And so, like anything else, when we look at class sizes, if we are, you know, if a class sectioning goes over, you know, we were just talking today. We, I believe it was third or fourth grade is a new resident moved in. And so a new section opens for third or fourth grade. And, and when a new section opens up, that means that sometimes there's 13, 14 students that are in a class because a new section just opened up. So it may be, you know, you know, depending on the data of students that are entering, it may be, then it turns out to be a class of 17 or a class of 16. So it really depends on where the numbers fall, but we're not changing, we're not increasing class sizes to accommodate grandparent permits.
Thank you for that.
Can I, can I just make one more comment? I, I, I'm glad you said that, Mary, because that was exactly one of the questions that I also had and why I want to view the data and the details around the program. Because this does raise a number of questions, right? Are we opening new classes? If, if, if a grandparent does want to send a child to the schools, do they have a right to then do it? Or are we only filling seats that are available in an existing class? And then if we do accept a child for a year, are they then, you know, kind of, you know, no pun intended, but are they then like grandfathered in? And do they then have the right to attend, you know, through the remainder of, you know, their years at that school? You know, is it then K through 12? Like, so these are the details that we need to make sure that we're like in front of.
Yep. And, and that information, all of that will come to you at the next board meeting with the real data.
Right.
Behind it. And also, I just wanted to add as well, with declining enrollment in the district, we've had to make some tough choices at the middle school and the high school level. As certain, we have so many elective offerings, as evidenced by tonight, the course offerings that we have. You know, there are oftentimes where a course, and it's all driven by student enrollment, but an elective course offering, and when you're starting to look at having 12 or 13 kids in a class at the middle school and high school, you know, we've had to make some, some decisions to not run a certain section of a course. So it works both ways. So, you know, accommodating some new students coming in, and the advantage of grandparent permits is it's not all geared towards one age group, like the expansion of the TK program. Well, they're all going to be our youngest learners, four and five years old. This is a TK through 12 initiative. So you're going to get pockets of kids at all different grade levels. We'll provide you with that data as well. But with declining enrollment, this is really the best-case scenario to keep some courses at the high school and the middle school, you know, keeping those classes running.
Mm-hmm. And, and, and just one thing to address about what Mrs. Marcus said. It's not a legacy program, right? We, what we're considering is a grandparent program. But the way that I look at it, the, the number of parents and grandparents, but parents specifically that have reached out to me with excitement about this program, every single one of them were, you know, Beverly Hills alumni themselves, right? So they still have a parent, their parents still live in the school district. Those are the grandparents. But it essentially, by default in some ways, is like a legacy program, I think, in the way that it's going to play out. I would be surprised if, at, at a minimum, but 75% of the children that may end up taking advantage didn't have a parent, right? Probably 75% or more had a parent that probably went to Beverly Hills schools, is what I would assume.
But they would not be able to go unless the grandparent lived there.
Correct, correct. Thank you, Dr. Bregge.
No problem.
I don't know if this has been asked. I'm sure it has. But just the only issue I would ask is, what kind of budget study are we doing along with the rest of this information that we're collecting?
So when we share that information with you, after tomorrow, we'll have some more hard numbers to share with you. We will be able to look at our, the current enrollment for each of our classes. And we're going to be able to look to see what is the impact by grade level. And, and I'll be sure to go over my entire report with you after the meeting, Mr. Margot. Thank you. As I bike out of here and bike back? You really missed out, but. I did. I'm happy to show you.
You guys know City Hall is downhill from here, which means it's uphill on the way back.
Any other comments? All right, Eli, you are on deck.
All righty. I got kind of fancy with the presentation tonight. With one, well, actually, it's kind of a minor thing, but I'll see if people notice it. I'm pretty proud of it. There's also going to be some sound, too. I've got some, some concert videos as well. So let's hope the sound works. And let's get into it. May 10th. See that?
Very cool.
See that? Thank you, thank you. All righty. So starting with the high school, as we do, and going straight into the past. So Cabaret was held right outside here in the STC patio by the French Department and the French Club. This is an event that generally happens every year whereby students perform, whether it be songs, whether it be poetry, all manner of talents in French. And as you can see, it draws quite a large audience. And so it was great to have that event back in person again. I understand, I know Dr. Bregge was there. And from what I heard, it was a, an absolutely fantastic event. So it's great to, to just see how fantastic our French program really is. Ms. Marcus was there. Fantastic. On to the Spring Orchestra Concert. So at the last board meeting, I had to run pretty early on because of this concert. And so here's a little clip of it. This is the, Mr. Bradbury's last orchestra concert at the high school. So let's play that. So that there was the closer of the concert, which was the second half of Selections from the Music Man. And it was done with the chamber orchestra and some band members to make it the full orchestra. On to the Spring Band Concert. So this was also a Mr. Bradbury retiring. This was his final concert with a high school, which is pretty, it's fantastic. It was definitely an emotional night, to be sure. And so here's a quick picture. And then there's also, the next is the ending of Selections from Les Mis, performed by the Symphonic Band. So not only was it the, the final concerts for Mr. Bradbury, but they were also the final concerts for the Class of 2022 members of band and orchestra. So fantastic night. This performance was followed by lots of other little, little performances after we announced the drum majors for next year and did a little send-off for Mr. Bradbury. And I know orchestra did the same. So all in all, a fantastic night. And after that, with the, the drum majors and I, with the help of Mrs. Bradbury, organized some, some other retirement surprises for Mr. Bradbury, where we got the marching band together, current members, as well as alumni and just general community members who were in the band even before Mr. Bradbury was the teacher, came by, and we marched down Moreno's, we do before football games, onto the track for him, played a couple of numbers, and just lots of, lots of speeches were given, lots of kudos to him. Onto Junior/Senior Night. So this is an event held yearly that, of course, we were not able to do last year, and I don't even believe the year before, where it's, it's similar to Color Wars, lots of similar games. But instead, it is juniors versus seniors, as the name suggests. And so this year, seniors wore black and juniors wore white. And of course, the seniors won, as, as they should. And so here's a, a victory picture from that. Onto the Pennant Party. So this is something done by the College Center and PTSA, where students who, I think almost every student knows where they're going to college at this point. Some are still waiting on certain wait lists, but everyone has been notified roughly. And so everyone got together and decorated a pennant for their college. That'll be hung up in the college center and just can be used to generally rep how fantastic our students are. I'll do a more in-depth dive into college decisions in the future. But it was a fun time. Pizza was provided. It was great. And then on to the future. So pretty near future is Prom this year, will be held on this Saturday, May 14th, which the theme is a night at the Met Gala. And so it, it should be a, a really fun time. Students always look forward to, to prom from their, their freshman all the way up through their senior year. And now it's a reality for them. So that's taking place, and I'll be sure to bring you some pictures of that after Saturday. As well as the Talent Show. Beverly's Got Talent will be May 25th at 5:30, and it'll be held in the same venue as Cabaret, the STC Courtyard. So hoping to see you all there. The BVMS. It's past and kind of present, the BVMS Art Exhibit. So BVMS Art Exhibition, student artwork from grade six through eight. It's virtual. Generally, it's held at, at City Hall, but the venue is still not open to visitors. So a big congratulations to Mr. Lisko and Ms. Montez for this fantastic achievement. I had the opportunity to look through some of the artwork the other night, and it's really, truly, it's fantastic. On the Hawthorne. So this was something that I brought up at the last board meeting, and that was New Walla, where students dress up as idioms on the other side of the calendar from Halloween. So here are some pictures of that from this year. They're pretty creative. I'm, I'm definitely a fan. And of course, students got to trick or treat with snacks that they're, and candies that they're, they brought to class for their classmates. And Horseman. So students in Ms. Hurst's class and Mr. Miller's class have the opportunity to visit the gentle barn and hang out with some animals, learn about farm animals, feed them, and just have a general great outing. It's, it's a very interdisciplinary sort of adventure that they went on there. The next item that I'll be talking about is also very interdisciplinary in that they're both learning about the, the animals themselves, about, as well as how they're taken care of, how to properly interact with them, how to properly interact with each other. And so here are some pictures from that. That's a turkey in the bottom left, or on the left, and a cow on the right. I believe that's an emu on the left as well. And then in that same vein of interdisciplinary lessons, students in Mrs. Fuer's first grade class, along with some parents, made paper mache animals, and they learned about solids, liquids, liquids and gases with them. And then also went on to learn about the animals that they made. And so the four animals that were the options were whitetail deer, rattlesnakes, octopuses, and trumpeter swans. And that's it. Any questions?
I love these presentations. They are so creative. They're amazing. By the way, I wonder, is the, is the plural of an octopus is an octopus or an octopi?
It, it is octopus. We, we, it is. It's because of the origin of the word. It gets weird. I remember having like a debate in my English class freshman year about it, and we, we got to the bottom of it, and it indeed was octopuses.
Really?
Yeah.
I thought it was octopi. Anyway, I just got to tell you that I really enjoyed the show tonight. He always makes it so interesting, and I want to thank you again. And I attended the, the music event the second night. And I have to tell you, as a former student in the music classes going through high school, how much that meant to me and how much I enjoyed it. And I have to tell you that I hope the students, when they go on, will continue to play those instruments. Because I think the one thing that I regret when I got to college was that I never continued to play. And that was a mistake. And I hope that you will all continue with your instruments because it's, music does something great for everybody, believe it or not. And the other thing is that art show, I also saw the art show at Mr. Lisko and the other teacher. Can't recall her name right now, but it was wonderful. And I really was amazed at the work that they do and what they can create. And then put it on a show like that was amazing. So thank you again for your great presentation.
No questions. Lots of thanks. I am very comfortable being the second-best student board member ever in your shadow, Eli. No, really. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. I wanted to thank you for highlighting interdisciplinary learning because a lot of people, I've, I've heard much older generations or other people just say, "Well, why are they going to a, you know, to a farm on a school day? And they should be just learning math and vocabulary." But the truth is, is that we know from research that the best learning for children, and actually adults too, is when it's all incorporated into all sorts of layers of living, of everyday life. So when, when the first grade class had interdisciplinary learning, not only did they visit the animals, but the fact that then that learning was reinforced by doing a lesson, I guess, in science properties of sci, of solids and things, by building paper mache. And then I think you said, I'm sure there was writing that was involved. So that type of learning is very powerful and very meaningful and goes way beyond what, what early public schools were, which was, we just sort of sat there and took in facts. So I just want to highlight that it's amazing that those teachers and the school embraced doing that. And I hope that we hear more about interdisciplinary. And I hope that we hear more about interdisciplinary learning and that people realize that this is really what makes learning fun, interesting, and rich through many disciplines. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. And for anybody who's going to check out the art show online, don't do it on your phones. Do it on a large screen because the kids deserve the biggest media possible. But it was terrific. You'll look at it and you go, "Oh, my God, these are kids", which is what we should say about all of our kids.
Thank you, Eli. I agree that art show is fantastic for middle school. I just really was so impressed by all of the artwork that I saw. It was really wonderful. I encourage you all to go see it.
Thank you, Eli. The future part, of course, raises my anxiety because there's so much to do. And as you've demonstrated in your presentation before the end of the year, and I just wonder how we're all going to get that in before the last day of school. Great report.
Okay. Next up is the Strategic Plan, Facilities, Construction, Deferred Maintenance, and MNO, presented by Ken Haas and Tim Ellis. Sure. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Tim Ellis, Director of Athletics, JPA, and Security for Beverly Hills Unified School District. And I'm here today to talk about the maintenance and operations part of the strategic plan.
Hello, I'm Ken Haas. I'm the Executive Director of Construction and Facilities for Beverly Hills Unified School District. And I'm here to collaborate with Ken in discussing our maintenance and operations portion of our strategic plan. Deferred Maintenance Plan has two purposes. One is to identify and then eliminate the deferred maintenance backlog that happens over sometimes decades of not having proper funding and potentially trying to keep up with aging buildings, which is very difficult. The second part of a deferred maintenance program is to make sure that as we accept our new buildings, that we're identifying things like roofing systems and air conditioning systems that aren't failed yet, but will reach end of useful life within, let's say, 20 to 25 years. So I work closely with Business Services to establish those budgets and methodologies so that we're able to fund those moving forward in the future, no matter what generation of leadership is in place. So our first task with our deferred maintenance plan we established about three years ago was to identify the deferred maintenance backlog, which we're doing a great job of funding and eliminating. We're taking huge bites out of those projects every month. And at the end, we're starting our third year of our deferred maintenance plan. And by the end of the fifth year, our deferred maintenance backlog will be eliminated and we'll be able to be focused on providing funding for future deferred maintenance projects, such as replacement of air conditionings and flooring 15 to 20 years from now.
I worked with Ken. One of the major issues that we redid during the COVID time was to redo our swim gym. Ken and I collaborated together in terms of what needed to be done. We needed a lot of maintenance, a lot of repair, updating of the swim gym to make the functionality of the floor more, so that we could operate that floor, opening and closing it on a regular basis to help support the athletic programs at the high school, the programs in the city through the JPA. Most part of the swim gym is probably divided equally between our aquatics program, boys, girls water polo, boys and girls swim, and the city of Beverly Hills. The city of Beverly Hills has an extensive adult swim program.
So the building was built in the 30s and it's a one-off building. So it's a very specialized place to work on in the sense that there's no off-the-shelf or on-the-shelf parts and equipment. So we had to go and evaluate the systems and the functionality of those systems and establish a methodology on how to actually repair and enhance the functionality of the swim gym floor. There were numerous components of the property that needed to be refurbished, such as tile that had aged, the tracks that the floor rides on, the wheel mechanisms that the floor rides on. And so we did a thorough inspection, established what the needs were, and then we engaged the services of specialized contractors to come out and give us and help develop a scope of work from which we would then build our budgets upon. At that point, we worked with various departments, such as our Business Services staff, to establish the proper funding sources for the various types of work. And we created a schedule and then began the process of procurement and implementation of those repairs and enhancements. We were able to stay within our budgets that were established and stay within our timelines that we established.
Now, the operation of the swim gym floor is working amazingly. We have no downtime. And also, I think, a byproduct of that is when something does break, the time it takes to repair it is a whole lot quicker. And so we aren't down, city programs aren't down. And so it's just been wonderful.
Painting the swim gym was part of our five-year deferred maintenance plan.
I think the fact that now that the building, both inside and out, the way it's been redone, it's a source of pride for the school. The kids are excited about going in there to play. Other schools show up and they go, "Wow, this is amazing." They look around like they're in awe. And I just think the overall aesthetics of the whole building, inside and out, has been enhanced greatly. And it's just, and I think now it's a source of pride for our students and our athletes in terms of being able to play in there and for them to compete there on a regular basis.
So as part of our deferred maintenance plan, the swim gym has two standalone areas, which are actually connected to the building, which we had an opportunity to enhance. One of those was the weight room and one of those is the cardio room.
In terms of the weight room, now you walk into that weight room and it's a beautiful, beautiful building. Kids now want to be in there. They want to go in there. They want to lift weights. They want to work. They want to get bigger, stronger, and work on that. It also has provided a source for the PE department and then to be able to incorporate weight training into their routines and into their program, along with the west side of that, where we now have spin bikes, elliptical machines, and treadmills, where now we can work on a cardiovascular system for our situation for our kids, PE-wise, and in our athletic department. And so it was a perfect time for us to get it done. At BVMS, they would like to have a, we're going to put a fitness room into their multipurpose room. It's a huge space right now that's kind of not used for anything. And we decided that, I talked to Ken about it, I worked with Dr. Skon over there, and we talked about making a fitness room in there that would enhance the overall experience for the middle school kids, enhance the PE department.
So when Tim brings maintenance and operations, or specifically me, into the conversation when he wants to enhance a space, one of the things I helped him do is determine what the scope of work is. So with regard to Beverly Vista Middle School NPR, we can speak to the floor and give you a couple of great examples of that. So part of my deferred maintenance plan is to actually redo the flooring this summer throughout the multipurpose room. But my initial plan was to replace with a similar type of flooring. However, because of the enhancement of the space that Tim wants to do and Dr. Skon wants to do, we're going to repurpose some of the deferred maintenance budget to procure the type of flooring that's suitable for the environment that they want to create. So instead of putting a hard tile floor in there, we're going to be putting a flexible floor that's going to allow for safety when the kids are using the weight equipment and also provide space where they can comfortably do things like yoga and other activities. So that's one way we do it, collaborate together because I will repurpose some of my budgets appropriately to be able to procure items that match what the athletic department is going to do, which enhances the overall student and staff experience. And then with regard to procurement process, there's different stakeholders involved. So this, actually, we could touch on this with Beverly Vista and the swim gym, for example. So if we look at the weight room at the swim gym, we had parts of it that were in our deferred maintenance plan. We had parts of it that were within the bond. We have parts of it that were outside stakeholders helped fund different things. And we're very careful and meticulous about evaluating the appropriate nature with which we use our various funding sources to make sure that we're complying with the rules and laws that we have to go by.
Ken, as you went through and you put your deferred maintenance plan together and your prioritizing of your facilities and what you wanted to do this year, outside of athletics, where you and I have worked closely together, what other projects have you taken on this year that'll help the student experience outside of athletics and across the district?
There's been so many, Tim, but I'll focus on, let's say, half a dozen or so that are very important. One of them was trip hazard abatement. So I'll give you an example of a larger trip hazard abatement project that we recently did, which was on the west side of the Beverly Hills High School A Building parking structures, both the student and staff parking areas. There were substantial areas of cracked concrete, which had several inch separations and gaps, which creates not only a rough driving experience, but also students and staff use those areas to walk in and out of the parking structures at times. So we were able to remove and replace those driveway aprons, which now creates a smooth walking path, a little smooth driving path. We've gotten a lot of emails and verbal comments from people about how much they appreciate the difference, that that's made for everybody. We also do trip hazard abatement inspections on an annual basis. We have a company that comes in and walks our sites. They give us great documentation of trip hazards that exist. And then we engage the services of a contractor who can then go and either grind and/or fill those areas as necessary on an annual basis to try to mitigate our trip hazards.
Ken, I was just also noticing the robotics room has experienced a huge transformation, along with the fashion room. There's an ASB room. Can you explain some of those rooms that maybe the average person doesn't know about, but it's really enhancing the overall educational experience for our students?
So we have an incredible CTE program here at the district. And I work closely with the maintenance and operations department to collaborate with the teaching staff and the other support staff that provides direction with regard to what the needs are for those various programs. Some of the programs would be the robotics program, our fashion program, our audio production program, just to name a few. And the way we operate within those programs is we work with our stakeholders to establish what the need is. And then we try to modify the rooms and provide funding and support as necessary in order to create those spaces in a way that's usable to accomplish the goals of those CTE programs. So in the robotics lab, I would use that as probably the biggest example because the robotics lab had not been modernized in quite a bit of time. And so we work closely with our teacher and support staff of the CTE program to establish what the needs were as far as equipment. And then the design of the room was created and then we procured all the different parts and installed the different parts. And we greatly enhanced the space. For example, we created two sides of the room where now you can work on wood with one side of the room and metal on the other side of the room, instead of using the same equipment for both, which enhances safety and mitigates some of the fire hazard that could be involved. We took the actual planning room and completely redid that. So now it's a space that really emulates what you might see in a professional environment if you were to go into a robotics or a mechanical lab in the outside industry. We wanted to try to look and feel like it would in the outside world, not just at school class. In the fashion area, we installed a considerable amount of sewing machines. But the standard classroom is not designed to support, let's say, 25 or 30 sewing machines. So we had our electrician go in and redo the electrical so that it would properly support it. And in the auto production room, similar type things. We've modified some of the electrical spaces and removed the door and a few other smaller things. So some of the projects are very labor and finance intensive and other ones are a little bit simpler. But at the end of the day, all of these efforts with the combined departments of MNO and Facilities, the CTE Group, Business Services, really enhances the student experience and the staff experience here by providing spaces that are adequately equipped and properly equipped and properly configured for the long term.
As we move on here, our high school is our biggest facility, probably our oldest facility with the most needs across the board. Is there anything else that's going on at the high school you'd like to highlight for us before we move on?
There's actually dozens of projects, but I'll focus on just a couple. The library. The library is very dated and dark. And so we want to try to combine, when we're trying to refresh a space, for preserving the aesthetic value of our older buildings, but also implementing some modern changes, such as even fresh paint. So we went in and took the perimeter areas of the dark walls and we simply painted them. But we also were able to implement some branding along the way in that there was several pilasters and pop-outs that were enhanced with our orange and black colors for the Beverly Hills High School. We've recently moved our maintenance and operations department to the high school and we've had the opportunity to remake all the different shops and tooling that helps support our maintenance and operations department, which by definition supports our programs. So that's a huge reason why we've been able to increase our responsiveness and effectiveness. For example, we've created a locksmith shop and a carpenter shop and a painting shop and a plumbing shop, an electrical shop, an HVAC shop, where we have all the parts. If you go into these various shops, you'll see shelving that is stocked with organized materials, tools, and equipment to support our operations. It looks much like you would see if you walked into a lumberyard or a Home Depot or something like that, where we literally have thousands of parts and fittings on hand so that we can quickly address the needs of our facilities. One of the challenges we have in our facilities, especially our aging facilities, the high school is probably the best example of that, Hawthorne as well, we have a lot of different components, different types, different generations. We can't afford to have a part break and then wait two, three weeks to try to order it. We need to have things on hand.
Looking at the deferred maintenance plan and our strategic plan, the atrium at BVMS is on there in terms of the lighting. And walking through, the other day, as I was walking out to the field, I was looking up at the sky and I thought, "Wow, how the heck are you going to get those lights switched out? How are you going to do that?"
So I'll touch on that from two angles. One is, that's an example of how important it is to have a seat at the table when we're actually designing buildings because architectural firms love to put things that are beautiful and what they think may be functional in certain places. But at the end of the day, we have to think about the people that actually have to turn the screw or change the bulb.
Absolutely.
So in the case of Beverly Vista, in our quad area or atrium area, we have lights that are approximately 60 feet up in the air that are in an area that you can't get normal lift equipment in there. So it's very challenging to change the lighting in there or even repair the lighting. So for some time, the lighting has been out in that area and one of our goals has been to replace that. But you have two ways of doing that. Either put some type of lift equipment in there or you erect some type of scaffolding. The scaffolding option would be totally cost prohibitive. It'd be well over six figures to change $1,000 with the bulbs and ballasts and capacitors. So fortunately, this last year, a company has developed a very specialized piece of equipment that has tracks on it, like a tank, which can drive up and downstairs and goes up to 77 feet. So we rented this piece of equipment and over a several day period, we're able to get it into the school and drive it down the stairs and then go up the 60 feet or so that we needed to, which by the way, takes a very brave soul to do that. Our electrician has wings and he was able to get up there and change all that lighting out for us so that now we have that restored lighting in that quad area.
Nice.
So Tim, we've talked a lot about the high school and the middle school and I don't want to forget our very important elementary schools. Can you talk to me about some of the programs that you have and how maintenance and operations is interacting with you on enhancing your programs?
One of the big ones is if you go to Horseman, our infamous purple field there. And that field gets a ton of use between the elementary school. And it's one of the biggest fields that gets used through the JPA program, AYSO, BH Little League.
So we've recently given attention to all of our district fields. They can be trip hazards. They can be unsightly or a combination. And we've engaged the services of a company to come out and rework those areas and properly stitch them back together. And then we also do a process that we use needle-like devices on. We call them tines, T-I-N-E-S. And what those do is those penetrate the surface and help redistribute the substrate so that the fields still are nice and soft and they also provide for proper fall safety. So if somebody falls on them, it minimizes the risk of them getting hurt and also extends the useful life of the fields themselves.
We have a JPA meeting a couple of weeks ago and we walked the facility at Hawthorne and walked into the library there and noticed, wow, a drastic change.
So the D Building, as well as other buildings at Hawthorne School, were part of our deferred maintenance plan. were part of our deferred maintenance plan. But in the D building in particular, last year, we had a very substantial water loss. It forced our hand as far as addressing the repairs of the building in a more expeditious manner and move things up on the schedule. But it also gave us an opportunity to really enhance the areas, such as the library, the lower basement, and the upstairs D building corridor, to paint a nice bright white in the corridors and match the lockers and paint the doors blue. And it has such a wonderful feel when you go in there. The staff loves it, the admin loves it. And it just, it just changes the entire energy of it. With regard to the library, when you walk in the library, you get the feeling that it's it's a place to relax and learn and enjoy. The surfaces are beautiful, and it's just a very functional space.
Ken, and as we wind through all of the schools here in the school district, it seems like there's a lot going on at most of the facilities with the exception of Horace Mann, other than the field striping and the restitching of the field. It just seems like there's not a whole lot going on at Horace Mann. Could you talk to us a little bit about why that would be?
Yeah, so in the process of building our deferred maintenance plan, as I spoke to you earlier, the deferred maintenance plan was primarily to address our backlog of deferred maintenance. Fortunately, Horace Mann had the opportunity to be modernized some years ago. And so the useful life of all the components of that school are not close to the end. So in building our deferred maintenance plan, there was very few things that we had to address at that school. And consequently, we've been able to focus our efforts on the other sites. The good news with that is that's where the, that's where we are taking the entire district. We're going to take the entire district to a place where we don't need to spend a ton of money on a deferred maintenance backlog. And we're able to perform preventative and general maintenance with regularity at the school so that we can maintain functionality and extend the useful life of all of our different components there. We, I can pretty comfortably say that although we have some malfunctions, virtually every one of our mechanical systems, whether they're old or new, are in a functional state at this point, and we're able to operate them properly. A key to having lowest possible maintenance expenditures and budgets is to do preventative maintenance to maximize the useful life of all of our components. And that has to do with whether it's a roofing system or whether it's an air conditioning system. So the deferred maintenance and preventative maintenance are not something you necessarily transition into and out of. It's something that you're constantly evolving in order to suit the needs of your properties.
Thanks for standing through that whole presentation.
You're all still awake.
Sorry about that. Eli, would you like to start? Do you have any questions?
Sure. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you, and I think I found my new favorite podcast or web show. I'm not sure if you have a title, but some of the working ones I've come up with are Talks with Tim and Ken or Coffee with Ken and Tim. Feel free to use those as you please. I haven't trademarked them myself. But yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. The format was fantastic. It really made everything very digestible, easy to understand. But no questions from me. Thank you.
I don't know what I can say after that most comprehensive report that was unbelievable. I don't think you left anything out. I mean, it was amazing. The fact, I don't want to even repeat anything you said because it was just so comprehensive and so complete. And I just wonder what you have in mind for 2223. I saw a few things there, but I, it's an amazing and a great presentation, and thank you very much.
Oh, no. Oh, no. I like the sound effects. That was great. No, thank you guys for the comprehensive overview of kind of what you guys are working on. It was, it was really helpful. A couple of questions. One, you guys mentioned that some of the funding comes from like outside sources, right? For some of the work that you guys are doing. Does any of that come by way of donations? I know before, if my memory serves me correctly, like the basketball court at some point was named? Like, we gave naming rights for that? This, I don't know if you guys can answer that, or if that's a question for Dr. Breggy, but like, how that works and is that, has that been a regular practice?
Yeah, BHF owns the naming rights. So they, so if anybody wants to name something, we go through the educational foundation, and they, they set the price for those. So like, there's, I think it's a Nazarian court.
Right.
There's two, both the scoreboards on either end are, were, you know, named for different people. And so we, we do offer naming rights for those kind of things. What we're looking at now with some of the machines in the weight room, we do, I call it a wedding registry, where you, we write down what we need. And a person will come in and say, okay, I want to donate that machine. So we put their name on that machine saying, this machine donated by Dr. and Mrs. Smith. And so we name that through BHF, and so they can donate that machine. Or we've talked about naming the pool deck if somebody wants to name that. So, but that all goes through the educational foundation.
So it's BHF that we would talk to about how to like promote that as an opportunity? Okay, all right.
Gabe, can I tack on one thing to that?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Periodically, the BHF comes in front of us with that menu selection, and we take a look at the prices. You know, we don't, they write it up, but in the past, we've approved it. And as time goes by, things obviously become more valuable, or as new buildings come online, there are new things. So it's a living document.
Yeah, no.
The other source of funding that we have is the BHAAA, the BH, Beverly Hills Alumni Athletic Association.
Right.
And they have a lot of money too, and I work closely with them in terms of different projects that we want to do. They are now wanting to get into the middle school because of our athletic program there. So their support for all of our programs has been tremendous.
It's, it's, it's wonderful. I saw that as part of the consent calendar tonight, some money that came from the Alumni Association, which is great. The Athletic Alumni Association. One other question was just around the equipment that we have. So I saw like, you know, awesome kind of supply rooms and equipment and how it's organized and all that. Are we logging that equipment and keeping it secure in the same way we would like IT, you know, computers, TVs, and whatnot, and, you know, keeping track of its useful life, all that kind of stuff?
Yes, there are breakpoints with regard to the value of certain equipment. So you may have a drill that's, let's say, $100, but another type of saw that's $600, and another type of saw that's $5,000. And I work with our Business Services Department to determine what items need to have asset tags, and those are kept within the system. With regard to how we secure them, each trade is responsible for their tools and equipment. We have an inventory list of that. And each of those shops have their own special locks. So even custodians, nobody can get into those special shops. I have, I have a master key, but everybody's very protective over their equipment. They're also very grateful of the changes they've seen over the last couple of years with regard to the generous support they've gotten so that they can have the proper amount of tools and equipment to get the job done.
That's great. Thank you.
And I think another person, does he's Wade still here? He's hiding back in the corner. I think when we do a lot of these projects, we go through Wade to make sure we're, all of our, you know, Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted, to make sure we're doing the right thing. How we can get certain funding, how we can, you know, manipulate things to get all this stuff done correctly. And I think Wade hiding back in the corner there is a big, big part of all this stuff that goes on.
That's great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I just want to say I really enjoyed that format. It's, it was great. I think it's like, is it like TMZ or there's some other thing where they have like a, the format of a conversation? And it's just much more organic, and I can hear your, you know, the way the thinking process is, and it was very interesting. But on another note, thank you for taking such good care and oversight of our school, and I appreciate it, and thank you so much.
Well, we have Rebecca to thank for that format and all the great work that she did helping us make it look as good as it did, so. Including my hair.
Took us, took us two guys and made us look somewhat decent.
Are there bloopers? We can see.
Yeah.
Oh, God.
We heard cut more than once.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't work with these two.
She's a bit of a prima donna, by the way. You're welcome.
Well, I'm just going to let that go. Thank you both. I don't know if people noticed, it was actually Wade that was up at BV changing those light bulbs. Thank you, Wade. He is brave enough to go up there. The question I wanted to bring up was Building A, the plan for the classrooms and flooring? Because I know we had, we had done the painting and floors for the hallways and public areas. We're all public areas, sorry. But I wanted to follow up and see what's the plan for the rest of Building A.
So currently, the classroom areas are not part of the deferred maintenance plan. When I arrived several years ago and created the deferred maintenance plan, the fate or future of the A building had not been established as far as how it was going to be funded or whether it was going to be remodeled. So I think that's a discussion that has to happen at higher levels to determine what funding levels are available to continue the work in the A building.
Then I think that we need to put that on the docket for discussion.
We have pricing that's pretty close, and we can talk, and we can add to the conversation by at least providing budget numbers for you folks to discuss.
Thank you very much both, and I want you to come organize my garage.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was really, really wonderful. I love the format too. And thank you for all the work that you've been doing for this past year. I have a few questions about, along the same lines as Noah, actually, but for Conheim. Are there any plans for, because to refresh Conheim in interim until, you know, I know they won't be here for an extended period of time, but in the meantime, there are students that are going in there, and I don't know what plans you have at all in terms of keeping.
So the Conheim is a very special building, has a special set of circumstances around it, which I think, again, is going to have to be discussed at the higher levels to determine what direction we go. It has to do so much with, you know, what's happening with our future, our fields and things like that. What I've been focused on is to try to keep the building functional. You know, keep the boilers, the mechanicals, the lighting working, keeping the floors fresh. We've put some work into the bathrooms to make sure that they're functional and usable. But there's, with regard to maintenance and operations, there's not a defined plan at this point. And I think we would need some direction as far as how the board and leadership wants us to proceed with that building. There's some real challenges with it.
Right. I mean, I just, when I look at the schedule of what we know so far, I mean, even if we are building Building C and things are moving quickly, you wouldn't, if I understand correctly, Conheim gets demolished at the very end. So that's still going to be used for two and a half, three years. So it just seems that we should be considering the students' experience that are going to be needing to use that building still. And so we should probably have a conversation about that as well. Another question I have about is your budget. So I know that you had, you have a deferred maintenance budget, and it's been for the different years. So where are you at on that budget, and where does that look for you moving forward?
So I just had quite a long meeting with Angelie, and we go through our budgets each year. And out of the nearly $3.5 million or so, I think it's a little bit over $3 million. I don't have my budget form in front of me, that we had scheduled for this last fiscal, which will end in June 30th, and then the next fiscal, '22, '23, we were right on the numbers. So I think we actually had about $85,000 worth of play, you know, for the '22, '23 season. So when I built the budget, I, I did try to foresee some, you know, nobody could foresee the amount of inflation that we're experiencing right now. But we're well within our budget and on target with our, all of our plans.
So you were able to get that many projects completed and able to use your funds?
Yes, and in fact, we've kind of accelerated for the 2022, '23 year. We'll be a little bit ahead of schedule by the time '22, '23 is over with.
That's great, because I think I remember last year you had more funds than you were able to actually get the work done because of COVID and all the other challenges.
There was COVID, there were supply chain issues. We never imagined that we'd be getting into as deeply as we did with the swim gym. That took a tremendous amount of focus and effort. And a big part of what we do is the procurement process. So between, you know, concept, design, implementation, and procurement, to the, you know, it can be months before we actually get to execute projects. And on top of that, different things happen. So for instance, the water damage at Hawthorne, that was profound. Amount of water damage there, that was a seven-figure project that popped up that wasn't on anybody's schedule. The deferred maintenance list of projects for that particular site included some of the things we had to do to Hawthorne, but we had to do a lot of undoing and then redoing. And then there's other things, and you may have heard people talking about it. Up on the third floor, we've had some other water damage in a couple of our bathrooms. And we were able to do the remediation portion of it, but because it's going to be such an invasive rebuild process, we haven't been able to start, we're going to have to sneak that in between summer school and JPA programs end to the start of school. So there are considerable distractions that occur. So it's not a matter of not properly using the budget. It's a matter of, you know, keeping the plate spinning and addressing the things that sometimes become more urgent than other things that were planned that weren't on the schedule. That was part of what happened last year with having excess.
Well, the swim gym looks so fantastic. I just want to.
It's a special project.
Yeah, I think everybody really has complimented it and is really enjoying it. I know there were a lot of more, a lot more unknowns and a lot more costs than was originally anticipated. So how did you budget for that and able to stay within the budget with all the unknowns that happened?
Well, it, as I mentioned in the presentation, we met with a lot of contractors, established the scope of work, and, you know, procured the funding that we needed from various sources. It wasn't just a single funding source. So some things came out of maintenance and operations, some things were paid for with the bond. Some of the funds were paid with our deferred maintenance budget. We received some donations for equipment at the end, which was a huge help to finish things off. So it was a combined effort on how to do that. There was no plan to do as much as we did in the swim gym. In fact, we had a very limited scope in the beginning, and then COVID hit. And we were able to, you know, take that opportunity of the extra time. We never would have been able to close that building down for the time that we needed to do a full overhaul like we did. So it was a moving target, but everybody collaborated, worked together, Business Services, and a lot of people in that procurement area that really helped, helped us, you know, get the Is dotted and the Ts crossed properly to make that happen. A lot of collaboration with Tim and his folks and the cooperation of the stakeholders that didn't get to use it and support from our cabinet and the board. So it's a lot of moving pieces with that.
Well, I know everyone's enjoying it now, including the people in the city for master plan. They're doing the master class swimming, I believe, as well. So it's really fantastic. One last question I have is just regular maintenance. So how does that figure into this? And what are the challenges you face with just our regular maintenance?
Well, the challenges that this school district has as far as regular maintenance is mostly the age of our buildings. So nothing is sitting on a shelf, you know, when it comes to a lot of our components. We deal with a lot of things, you know, whenever we have to touch something and disturb something, you've got lead paint, or you've got asbestos, and, or other challenges that you have to address before you can do, let's say, even a simple job. So I've got a job right now in the ceramics lab where we're going to have to pull out some cabinets and do some repairs, but there's some lead in the paint. So we can't disturb things without going through some major efforts. Even what project we just recently had at the district office, where, you know, we wanted to do a simple flooring project, but it turned into an abatement project. And I think that happens on the construction side of things as well. We, there's a lot of unforeseen things, and you actually, and that's part of how our department, and I say our department because we, you know, we all in the district collaborate so well together within our departments. We, we understand that there's going to be unforeseen circumstances, and we actually try to plan and budget for those things. And so even though I may not know what's going to happen, I know to build in extra time or some extra money to be able to address those unforeseen, much like we would do, you know, with an alternate on one of our bids that we might go out for, to say, you know, let's put a pocket of money in here for something we're going to find that we don't know what it is yet. So that's a big part of it, and that's probably our biggest challenge is, you know, just addressing the unknowns and then with our aging infrastructure. So if you, the A building at the high school is a great example. There's miles, miles of pipes and wires that are old and aging, but you can't tear the building apart to get to them. It's not like repiping a house where you see the commercial in two days. It's not like repiping a house where you see the commercial in two days, you know, you put new pipes in. And so it's taken a lot of effort to get an understanding of where that infrastructure is and get a handle on some of the failing mechanical systems that we had. So now that we're focusing more on a preventive maintenance thing. And an example of that is, you know, people see, let's say, a stained ceiling tile. Well, that could be a leaky roof, could be a leaky sewer line, it could be a leaky water pipe, which are all different types of things. So each one of my departments, we've been working really hard on growing and developing our staff so that we don't just go and change the ceiling tile. Pull the ceiling tile out, inspect what's going on. And, and, and you can't believe how many, if you looked at how many different projects in the pictures my plumber sends me, you know, he'll find these corroded fittings and elbows and things like that that are just about to go. Or maybe have just a little pinhole. Or even our condensation lines, which are the lines where water collects as our air conditioning systems dehumidify the air. You can't wait for them to leak, you have to blow them out regularly. So a lot of that gets into preventative and general maintenance. So those are the challenges really is, is the unforeseen and then getting a handle on a lot of our inaccessible and unknown aging infrastructure. But we're, we're getting it. And, you know, it's, it's an aggressive process and our teams are tuned into it and they're getting better. The fit reports help a lot because we get those fresh eyes coming in and they're kind of merciless with us. And they call us on everything. One of my goals for this year, when we do our fit reports, is to get us from that good to excellent. But one of the challenges with that, it's not like a school grade where, you know, ninety to a hundred percent's an A and eighty to ninety percent's a B. It's, we're at ninety-six, ninety-seven percent successful at all of our sites and we're still just in the good realm. And you have to get to that ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent to get to the excellent realm. And so I feel like this year, we're probably close enough. I'm, I'm not going to make a promise yet, but I'm, I'm thinking next year, when we do a presentation, we're going to have at least half our schools in an excellent range.
That's terrific. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
One last thing before I close, are you done?
Uh huh.
Was that, I want to go back to what Gabe was talking about, funding. I thought somebody might ask about the fitness room at BVMS. The PTA at BVMS has ponied up all the money for all the equipment for that fitness room. So I want to give them that. So the, the PTAs also work with us in terms of those areas. The PTA at the high school put brand-new cheer mats in the cheer room. The we re, that, I think that part got cut on the floor for editing purposes. But that room upstairs that he did, we put all new cheer mats in that room. And so one of the, the PTA at the high school and then BVMS's PTA went above and beyond to furnish that whole weight room for that fitness room, so.
That's so fantastic.
Yeah, it's amazing. They, they, they just went above and beyond, so.
I, I mean, we, we are so lucky in our community to have so many.
Absolutely.
People that want to participate and help contribute to bettering our schools. I mean, in so many different ways, be it, you know, just the internships or, you know, the people that work with Cindy Dupin or, and this, this environment. I, I know people have come to me and said, how can I help with the schools? So I hear it all the time, so we're really lucky.
I know, know it's getting late, but mission accomplished.
Yeah.
It's exactly, you know, a, a year ago, I remember standing, we were doing our retreat and, and we talked about how we really need to make the strategic plan come alive so that it's interesting, because it is really interesting that we, what we get to do every day. And what I'm hoping is that people are able to start to see like how interconnected all of this work is, because, you know, this happened, you know, in collaboration with construction and with student services, with ed services, with communication. And it just, it, you're going to see how this really small team works really well together to make preparations like this. So I want to thank you very much for that. And last night, I was leaving, it was about 10 o'clock, and I was leaving the office and I was going to put on the alarm, because I thought I was there by myself. And I heard the, oh no, oh no. So coming from the upstairs at the district office, so I walked up there to see who was on TikTok and, and it was Ms. Starkins finishing up, putting last-minute touches on the presentation. So clearly, it, it is a collaboration. It really takes everybody to put this all together. And I just wanted to say thank you very much for that report. And we look forward to bringing you some others, as well as the construction piece, which we, due to time, we're going to share that with you the next time.
Just one more quick question, if I could. How much of the developer fees can you use toward any of the maintenance and that you're doing, the deferred maintenance?
So I would have to work with Wade on that. So far, I have not tapped into my department into developer fees.
He's totally amusing.
But.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to use developer fees because the developer fees are for growth. And so.
Can't use them.
Correct.
Thank you guys for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Rebecca.
And Rebecca, thank you. Really, she.
Really wonderful. I appreciate all the work you put into it. Thank you. Okay. The next is Bond Manager Report. Is that you, Pam Johnson?
So at the last board meeting, I followed David Damical. And I thought that was tough. And now I've got the Tim and Ken, so. Podcast, right. So I know it's late, I just have a, yes, please. Thank you. Just have a, a few progress photos for you. And they all have captions, so we'll just go through them quickly. And then if you want to go back, I think they're all pretty self-explanatory. So now all you have to do is tell me what to push. Thank you. Okay. All right. So Rebecca's letting me use her computer so I can control my own slides. So we'll see how this goes. These are some photos of the progress on the underground utilities project. Yeah, good. I'm just not going to read them. I think there's, many of them are self-explanatory here. We'll go through these pretty quickly. And then we'll get to B3, B4. This, this photo is, shows the installation of the conduit so that we have the electrical tie-in from the basement in B2 to B3, B4. And this was a, a time-consuming and challenging part of this project. So we're very happy to see this progress. These are various photos, mostly of structural integrity pieces. And here we have, and remember these photos, by the time we get them to you, they're about 10 days old. So this is showing some roof sheeting on the B4 roof. And if you go out there now, you'll see that they're putting tile up now. Just in time for the rain. This is building B4, the coral room. And you can see that they've now placed the concrete in there. This is the base for the flooring that will go into the coral room, which I am told is going to be, and Ken will be happy to hear this, a marmoleum composite tile with a three-color random pattern. Okay, on to El Rodeo. This is preparation for the field. This is the synthetic field that's going to be on the corner of Wilshire and Whittier. So the, this is the first step in preparing this field. Here's another shot of the same concrete curb. All right. Now we're in Building B. And Building B is the kindergarten and the TK building. And this, preparing for the, the windows that are scheduled for late summer. Here we have some roof preparation. This is in Building C. Building C is classrooms with the cafeteria in the, in the basement. Here's some ceiling preparation. Now more window and wall preparation in Building C. And if you look at this, you can see it's starting to look like a classroom. Now we're, we're on to Building D. So here's the ceiling, ceiling going in. This is inside a classroom. That's a steel that will hold a, a low wall. And on to Building E, where they're preparing for a T-bar ceiling. And the last few, I'm just going to flip through because all of the, the red that indicates something new from the last time we showed you these, because these are 10 days old, all of these are done. All of this is done. The only thing that's still outstanding is this one that we're working through. But these, all of these are completed. All this completed. And then just some photos. Now this one, Eli, would be a great place that I could add some sound that would rival your concerts. Maybe next time. This is the well seller core drilling. This is interesting, they drilling holes in this because I guess that stays so that when it rains or whatever happens, that it, it drains through. Okay? And that's it for tonight. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have questions for Pam?
Just one. Pam, thank you. Just one thing that I wanted to clarify. I guess this is from your presentation two weeks ago. But we, we descoped, we descoped a number of things to get to that balance that we had last time. I'm looking at the slide you put up last time, that's at eighty-nine million and change. The, the bridge in the high school, we had, that was one of the things that was descoped, correct?
Correct.
And, and, but the demolition of the, of the bridge was included?
No.
In, in, okay, so both the demo and the building of any new bridge, all of that has been descoped. So that's part of the discretionary funding.
But there's not a new bridge. There's no new bridge.
There's, okay. So all of that, and so anything having to do with the bridge would be discretionary sort of going forward and would come out of that eighty-nine million dollar bounty.
Correct.
Just wanted to be sure. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move on then. For planning of facilities, approval of Amendment Number 11 to the lease-leaseback agreement between Beverly Hills Unified School District and Pro West. Pro West Contractors for Beverly Hills High School, B1 and B2 Modernization for retaining wall number five, ensuring added to the guaranteed max price of site access and utilities modernization may have a motion.
So moved?
And may have a second.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Mr. Margot. I'm going to open it up for discussion and questions. I have a question. This is coming, this is the, being added to the site work?
Correct.
So it's not coming out of the Veneco?
No, it's not. This is additional.
Okay, so I guess I'm a little confused on the site work, the, the south site budget. So like, I've seen like on the CBOC, it's sixty-three million. But then I, you know, what is that, what is that including this? What are you budgeting with the sixty-three million? And so where does this, is this part of that sixty-three million? And what number did you think you were going to have in this area?
The south site budget was one of those that two weeks ago, we reduced. So there is no south site budget. We reduced that to zero. So the, to costs incurred. So what has come out of that south side budget so far is the design for the rest of the campus that you approved in November for DLR. Five and a half million.
Uh huh. And so you're just adding what costs have been?
I'm sorry?
What costs are getting allocated to that area at this time?
Just the design.
Okay. What happened with your budget for sixty-three million?
As I discussed last two weeks ago, we reduced all of those budgets and put it into the eighty-nine million so that the board would have clarity on what you have left for decisions.
I guess without seeing it, I can't.
So you're just wanting, you're wondering with the scope of work on the south side?
Yeah, I'm just curious if the seven million or, I mean, if we're going to do retaining wall five, where does that put us in, if we were to complete that area? The whole south side area?
All right. So what we have before you tonight on Amendment 11 would reduce the eighty-nine million by eight point nine million.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
My question is, what else, I mean, I guess I'm going back a few steps for you. When you had the sixty-three million, what did you have budgeted in the sixty-three million?
Okay. I think, Mrs. Wells, I would like to go back and look at that because just off the top of my head, to say that, I'm, I'm not sure that I would give you an accurate answer.
Okay.
So if that's the question of if, because there's no longer the budget, but if the question is what was budgeted in the sixty-three million?
Right, I'm just trying to get a sense of.
Yeah, I could bring that back.
What was budgeted for the south side area? You know, what, what else was in that area? So I can kind of evaluate what that number looks like.
Can do that.
And Pam, just to piggyback on that, the front lawn work, is that going to be included on that south side package? Or is the south side, just literally the south side?
It's part of the design.
So the front lawn will be part of that design? So eventually, it will have to be budgeted as part of the project, except that I think one comes way before the other.
Right.
Okay. All right.
For the Veneco site, when the water break happened, I feel like we already had a budget for that area. And I think that was around seven million.
It was.
And so now we've had the water break. And so where is that in relation to the work that you're doing? That, that's on this amendment for, you know, how do those two relate to each other?
For that, I'm going to ask Mr. Roach to come and join me, because he's the.
Right, because originally, the seven million before the water break, what was it, what was that?
That was for, to restore the site.
Right, so which included doing what? I thought, I understood it was the wall.
Yeah, it, no. It is the work that ARB is doing for the restoration.
But not, Pam, does that not include covering the dirt? Covering that area with the backfill or whatever the dirt that needs to be for that area?
It's, it's not a simple answer for that because it depends on DTSC, the DTSC approval. So for instance, if DTSC says that we can use dirt that is on the existing site, that's one number. If we decide to bring in clean dirt, twenty-seven thousand yards of clean dirt, then that's a much bigger number.
And were those numbers in the seven million for the Veneco site? Or was that in the south side?
It's in the south side.
So only, the only thing for the Veneco seven million was just the ARB?
Correct, to demolish, demo, demolishing the equipment. Yes. And clearing that all out.
For some reason, I thought we had a conversation that it included more.
Remember the dirt was coming, is coming from the former building H. And so the dirt isn't available unless the board decides to go forward with other work on the south side. It's all interrelated.
Okay.
Sorry, you didn't get to talk about the insurance.
Does anyone else have any other questions? I think there, you have a number in this for, an estimate in, is part of this number includes the dirt, right?
It completely includes the dirt.
Okay, so you're basing that on putting in clean dirt.
Excuse me, Randy, would you like to? Why don't you come?
Wait, part of, part of Amendment 11 includes the dirt, you're asking?
Yes, it does. Right?
But this is just section five, right?
But it's part of the work. If you read that what's included, it'll tell you.
The dirt is included in this amendment. So.
The dirt is included in uh this amendment. So we're gonna bring dirt in, backfill the giant hole that's there, and it's gonna match the grade of the existing softball field.
Right.
And that's in this number.
Okay, so you're going with the version of we need new dirt and that's what it?
Well, we don't have any dirt at all right now. It's all air.
Right.
So we're gonna have to import dirt. We will import nice clean dirt to fill the hole. It's gotta be compacted and inspected, but it will be clean dirt. We we have no dirt right now to use, other than a few small piles.
Right, thank you.
But this is, this is, sorry, this is different dirt. It's a messy, it's a dirty conversation. Um this is different dirt than the entire section, right? That that Pam is talking about with the DTSC. You're talking about the backfill for retaining wall five? Are we talking about the entire section of what's going to eventually be the baseball and softball field?
This is, this is only the piece related to the Venico site.
Okay.
If you were to go out and look at it, there's a retaining wall on the north side, then you have concrete slabs, and then it dips down. Has multiple levels and it has a retaining wall on the south side along Olympic. That entire area is going to be backfilled all at the same grade.
Okay, so then I would, I get, thank you. So then Pam, I would say that are we still, is the dirt that you're talking about everything else? Or is it, or is it?
I I don't, I don't remember the exact calculation on the dirt.
No, no, I don't need a calculation. What I'm wondering is, you're talking about a section of the field and a section of dirt that has to be done, right? And then then there's this overall section of dirt that has to be done that go, eventually it's all gonna be the same thing. So it's all graded to be the same. So what I'm wondering is, does your twenty-seven thousand include that or it's separate?
No, I think it brings it up to the grade level.
I I think that if if you look at the overall site for the design of the future, all of the future ball field, that is a much bigger number that involves a lot more dirt.
That's, that, what it's, I get that.
And a lot of that dirt is gonna go away, is gonna be exported.
I get that. I understand that part. What I'm, what I, but because eventually these two little dirt families are gonna touch each other, okay? Is is, at what, at what point is, is it encroaching on the twenty-seven thousand cubic yards or it's not? And those are, it's your section and then twenty-seven thousand cubic yards.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the twenty-seven thousand cubic yards at all. What what we have in the proposed amendment is all of the import, all the dirt necessary to completely fill the Venico site and bring it up to the level of the existing softball field.
Is, but is that, is that, I know, I I'm getting in the weeds about this. Is that the finished grade? The existing softball field or is, are we putting more over that?
That's gonna be the finished grade.
Okay.
We're coming up to the finished grade of of where the new softball, where the new softball field will be.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Yeah, that corner is gonna be taken care of.
Right.
Thank you. So that that would be ready for field after that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Right, so my question was, I always thought that was in the Venico budget, so that's why I was getting confused that it was now in the south side.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that's ever been in the Venico budget.
Right, okay.
That was, that was, that was in in the retaining wall estimates in the retaining wall budget.
Uh huh, okay. Well, that clarifies that for me. That's what I was trying to get to.
Okay.
Um I think that um the only other question that I have about this is um I'm gonna assume that we didn't have any legal look at the amendment. And so uh my recommendation on this is that because we, I think it would be prudent for us to have legal just take a a look at it because we didn't do that for B-three, B-four's last buyout as well. And I know that on our list of things to do, it was, had an asterisk of that that's something that legal should look at uh on these agreements, and we haven't done that, and we didn't do that on B, the last buyout for B-three, B-four. So I would recommend to the board that um we do have legal, just take a look at it before we approve this because I just think it's the prudent thing to do.
Can can we have that done for the next meeting? So this can, we can have legal review and then get this back on?
We could, we could have that done.
Yeah, I don't think it would take very long.
Is is that okay on the time wise with this? Two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so Gabe, do you wanna withdraw the motion?
I just had one more question, then I'll withdraw the motion. So I just wanna make sure that I completely understand. So once we approve this scope, hopefully at the next board meeting, we will have finished dirt compacted and ready to put grass on to have a field. Is that the?
The work that we're doing is is filling the Venico site. It doesn't completely finish the entire softball field. It just takes care of the Venico site.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna hopefully help this situation. Rebecca, can you put up page two of the presentation? Cause I, cause Gabe, I'm, I'm, in my head, I'm trying to master this.
Yeah.
And I just wanna.
Well, on amendment eleven, you included a picture with, and you identified the wall.
Yeah, the wall. What? Pam's presentation, yeah, page two.
Page two?
Page two, yeah, it's, it's got a picture of the field.
This?
Yes.
Okay.
So, okay. Everyone's application, you're doing this dirt over here.
Correct, that's right.
You're not doing this dirt.
Right.
When you're done, we can at least put the infield of the softball field.
Well, you still have that other wall.
It may be right field.
Yeah, we need this wall too. We can get right field. So does that make sense?
Yeah. Thank you.
We're all visual learners here.
Alright, with that, uh I will withdraw my motion uh for uh fourteen A.
So I'll, as a, I think I seconded that, right Pam? Did I second that Pam? Okay, so I'll accept that, withdraw. And move to table this item. Well, I gotta make a mo, I gotta make a motion. Do I have to, I have to make a mo, we have to table this, right? Yeah, okay. So what I'm gonna do is, I I assume we're gonna have the same issue with the next item, so I'm just gonna move to table items fourteen A and fourteen B to the May twenty-fourth meeting so we can have a legal review. Does that work, everybody? No, Michelle says no.
According to the uh number B, it has something to do in the rationale with the um, the uh bridge. And in the, it says in here in the rationale, this is to bring, to demolish the bridge between building A and buildings. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm hearing about this bridge and and now we're talking about dirt and you you withdrawing this one which has to do with the bridge. So I just want some clarification on this before we, are we? We're talking about a bridge in B, not dirt and number two. And it, and I was under the impression that according to what we just heard, the bridge is not involved or is not being done on anything right now, or there were, is there something about the bridge being? Pam, you said something about there is no money for the bridge or we weren't doing the bridge, right?
I I can maybe clarify where we, how we got here. Uh we got in at the um lease-leaseback agreement for B-three, B-four, which was what more or less the final one, and it did not include demolishing the bridge. And when we talked about that, we talked about what would be the cost to do that and is that something that we would want to have included now at this time? So they went back and put together the cost and they put it together for us to see, to decide if we wanna add that into or make an amendment to add that to B-three, B-four now, or is this something that is to, that we'd wanna wait on later?
Well, Noah is making a motion now to.
But the reason I think we're talking about withdrawing it now or tabling it now is because we haven't had legal to review it. Is that correct? So?
Yes.
If we're gonna have them, if we're gonna have them review the other amendment, we should have them review both.
Okay, that's fine.
And I do have, I, I.
I was just saying that this was not the same concept as the other one.
Right, you're right. We just jumped ahead a little.
Totally different concept, but I have another issue with item B that I wanna bring up. But let me make the motion to table these two and then we can have discussion about either of these. So I'm gonna move to table uh items fourteen A and B to the May twenty-fourth meeting um after legal review.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion was made by Noah Margot and seconded by Mr. Halimi.
Okay, so can we go around on item B now just before we take the vote?
Sure.
Okay, so does anybody wanna talk about the bridge?
Yeah, I mean, uh so, oh, sorry, did you wanna go first?
Yeah, well, my question on it, it was answered, is if they go ahead to do the bridge, will they finish it up and are they, to complete the thing, to complete the restoration and what will it be? And that was, because I was under the impression that the bridge was to be used or there was some reason to keep the bridge because there was some use for it. Is that correct?
There was discussion, there was previous discussion about that, but the kibosh was put on that so we could move forward with planning the demo.
You, in other words, you're not using it, there's no reason to keep the bridge for use.
There there are other options that we're exploring.
Okay, that's all I wanna know.
Could I say something?
Yeah.
Uh not really a question or comment, I just wanted to give props to Pro West. I actually, the day after the meeting where we initially tabled the, or discussing the amendment that did not include the bridge, I ran into their guys uh during school, surveying the area, just to getting everything ready to, I guess, present this amendment today. So uh just wanted to give props for that. It was, it was good to see them on campus. Um and yeah, just.
Thank you.
Carry on.
It was good to see them. They're always on campus. Can't get rid of these guys. Keep voting on these amendments, we'll never get rid of them.
In the, in the board Q and A, we said restoration is included, right? So we're removing the bridge. When we say restoration is included, what is restoration is included?
You have two giant holes on the side of building A.
And we're filling the hole.
Yeah, it's putting it all down.
Alright, I just wanted to clarify. Okay, thanks.
Okay, question of the night. Staff, Dr. Reggie. How have we coordinated the schedule between the high school, its students that use the high school and this project? Or have we done that?
What, can you say that again?
How have we coordinated? Because this is gonna have a huge impact on the educational program during the construction and or during the demo. So how have we coordinated that? Or do we have a plan of when in the season we would start this, when it's gonna fall? How long it'll take? What are we gonna do with people? All that stuff. Cause I know Heath will be closed for a while.
Right, I I can only share, uh it's been limited conversation, but um uh I can share with you that that there is too much going on this summer. There's too much traffic uh with summer school that this is not something that we could, we could do this summer. Uh the campus, um July fifteenth uh is is a, is pretty much a time where, you know, there's very limited traffic, but up until July fifteenth, it is a full JPA, full summer school program. So um I do know that it isn't something that that we could do uh in a, in a safe way this summer.
Okay, so do we have a plan of when we're gonna execute this? And is everybody in alignment as far as administration and the team and have, has that all been?
No, I would, I would say that we need to have those discussions and when that can take place.
I I think, I think that would be a great thing to know before we approve it. I don't have an issue approving it, but I just think that's a big what-if because it involves students and programming. Um this, this, we, we don't. I would say we don't have the luxury of a pandemic to clear the campus of students, but uh um that's, that's.
Well, in fairness, I think that's why it was left out of B-three and B-four's last buyout, so we're just come full circle.
So so I think now's the time to get, to get that information when, when this comes back, to have a general idea. Yes, we're gonna do it summer twenty-three, it's gonna be, it's gonna take this, you know, and then, and then we know what we're gonna do with the summer school kids. We know what we're gonna do with anything on campus, you know, we're gonna make the accommodations for that.
Right, the the real crunch is, is this summer and uh the work that's happening at uh BVMS, which is pushing some of the work, so.
And that's, and that's great. That's, I, that's great that we know that, but I just, I I just, I can't in confidence say, yeah, go ahead and do this. And we don't really know how it's gonna play out on the campus.
Yeah, I mean, one thing, I, that I would.
So if we know that, and it could, it's maybe a, a ten-minute discussion you guys all have to have, that's fine. I just, it it, I'd like to be able to know that when I come back.
Yeah, no, I, I think that it's not a long conversation. I mean, and and really it's um, you know, a discussion about how long the the project takes, you know, and then we could start looking at uh, you know, those vacation times, uh you know, so that, you know, all the way up until the following summer.
Well.
Yeah, whatever has to happen.
But we can have those conversations.
The other thing that I would say also is, um and this was another question that I was trying to get answered, is if we have to demo that bridge now um to complete building three and four because could we wait until down the road when building A has to be done? And then address it at that time and save that that money for other areas where we know we're going to need the money? So is that another possibility of just putting that off until building A is done, which could have been the scenario in the first place by leaving it off? Cause I think we wanna assess where we are, like financially and what funds we need. And we may need those funds. And right now, the the cost, I think it's around three million or something to that effect. But that's just your cost, so that doesn't include consulting fees and all the other people that will have to come in for asbestos and all the other things. So the those costs will be more, I I assume, uh all in, and we just may want that money to be allocated someplace else if it doesn't need to be done right away.
It's, it's an interesting question. I guess the would be, what are the ramifications for closing out the B-three, B-four project?
Right, if we can do it, then.
Can we excise that from, because it is part of the plans, right? The approved plans. So I guess that would be the question is, can we, will we be able to move forward and close it out or will it just be an open?
Right.
Open project. And does that have negative ramifications to have an open project? You know, I guess that would be.
So my understanding that is to get final DSA closeout on B-three and B-four, we have to demolish the bridge.
Okay.
Because there is, it is a fire life safety and an access issue. So when the bridge comes down, and I've got the experts right here that can say it, is yes, there's a hole on building A that has to be filled and restored. But then there's more complicated um work on B, on B-three.
Right. So if if you go this route and you don't do it now and defer to the end of the whole project, let's say, and you don't close out because I I doubt DSA will let you excise that out of the plans.
Right.
Okay, so if you don't close out, what are the ramifications of not closing out a project?
Um I would not wanna overstate the ramifications, but if you do not have DSA closeout, you do not have a DSA-approved building.
Then we have a liability.
So can you, can you occupy a DSA non-approved building?
I don't think so.
I wouldn't.
Then, then that answers the question. Thank you.
So I.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Sorry, one, one, I guess one request I have to Noah's point is, the next time these are gonna come in front of the board, which I imagine is gonna be at the next board meeting, is what we're voting on in two weeks. It would be great to have a full understanding of what the all-in cost for these things are gonna be because we know we have eighty-nine point five million dollars to work with. With the approval of these two, we're at seventy-seven point eight. Not knowing exactly how much the full all-in cost, as Mary just pointed out, is gonna be with the bridge. I think, I think we have to be uber careful in terms of what we're actually approving here. Cause if we start a project, it's not just the amount that we're approving here, it's all of the other additional costs. So like, I, I think we talked about doing this as part of maybe a study session to just get like some kind of an understanding of how we're gonna allocate these dollars and make sure we're on the same page.
We have that study session scheduled.
Okay.
Before this meeting.
Great.
So.
Okay. Oh, is, is that next Tuesday?
On the twenty-fourth.
I think we're working on that schedule, yeah.
We're still working on that date.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Quick question, so just to be clear, cause I wanna make sure I'm clear. We have to demolish this bridge, is that correct Pam? We have to demolish it.
In order to get?
To get DSA approval, and it comes to building three, right? Okay, just wanna make sure I understand correctly.
Okay, so we call for the vote?
So we're voting on table, just to be clear, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes five-zero with preferential vote from Eli Raymer. And.
I'll make a motion for the approval of amendment one to the agreement with environmental audit.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions? Um I just have one question. Wade, on this environmental audit, can you just do a little recap on what monitoring we're doing? Like, I know we do, we have the tunnel, I mean, we have the um different areas that we're doing. So just at the high school, if you could just recap.
Pam, you wanna help me?
Sure.
Thanks. Cause I know we, we reduce some, right? Am I correct about that? We reduce some monitoring now?
So President Wells, what we've done are we're looking at reducing some of the dust and vibration monitoring, but not so much the methane monitoring. Is that correct Pam?
Yes.
Have we already reduced the dust monitoring?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is not, this does not have anything to do with the methane monitoring.
What is this for?
This is for uh hydrogen sulfide, volatile organic compounds, carbon dioxide and oxygen.
In which area, I'm sorry?
On the high school. So these are the, these are the monitors that are along the fence.
Okay.
All of those. And this, yeah, and all for MTA because of MTA, and it's only through June thirty. And it's only through June thirty. So, on June thir-, just to get us through the end of this fiscal year, and then you can decide if you want to keep going with it.
Okay, terrific. Anyone else have any questions?
Scientifically, I would wonder why are we monitoring COT and CO2 and oxygen when it exists in the air?
Um, you know, I would have to check on that and get back to you, because that is not my.
Yeah, I'd like to know where that recommendation is coming from. So, I'd like to know as well.
Hydrogen sulfide, absolutely. Volatile organic compounds, anything with the word volatile, you have to monitor.
Right, right. Okay.
Carbon and hydrogen, you know, we're just missing nitrogen, and then we have our environment.
Okay.
That much I know. Oh, high school chemistry, you're still losing.
Yeah, June thirty, yeah.
So, hopefully we can have.
It's only for a month? All right. If there's no more questions, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes five zero with preferential vote from Eli Raymer.
Okay, I'll move for the approval of amendment number thirty-six to the agreement with the DLR architects for the architectural services for the modernization of Beverly Hills High School.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Noah Margot. I'm glad you guys are up there. Um, can you, go ahead, Rochelle.
I was just going to ask if we could explain this so that people would understand what it's all about.
I was going to ask the same.
For the purpose of the audience and which I questioned, I have the answer, but I think everybody else deserves it.
Okay, so first, let me correct, uh, number in the rationale. So, in the, uh, second paragraph in the rationale, it says amendment number thirty-six would reconcile the architect's fee to a construction cost of a hundred and twenty-six million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. That is the final, um, GMP on B three, B four that you approved a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
Um, the architects, DLR group, uh, by contract, are paid a percentage of the final construction cost. So, all during the, the project, we true up their fee as the project, um, becomes more expensive. So, the, the number that they're going to be trued up to now is not the total one twenty-six, because in that one twenty-six are the contingencies that may or may not be used. So, if there were to be a savings on this project, as there was on B one, B two, and we had trued them up to the total, then they would owe the district money. So, instead, they're being trued up to one hundred and ten million, two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Why don't you true them up to the actual cost of where you are on the project?
By contract, they are, um, trued up at the time that the construction cost is determined.
So, are you saying right now, uh, that one million, seven hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and forty dollars is not correct, or is?
No, that is correct. That number's correct. The, the nu-, the construction cost in here is incorrect.
True up to the DLR for the, for the percentage that they get.
But couldn't it potentially be less? To your point, there could be more savings so that the constru-, actual construction cost actually could be less? So, then do you go back and true up again in case it's less? Because.
We could. If it's less, yes.
Or why not just do it based on actual real costs?
Based on the construction audit before the final payments are made? Yes, that's when it's all, that's all true to.
With the architects as well?
Yes.
And just to be clear, none of the things that were de-scoped that we've talked about are included in the amounts that they're being trued up for?
It's purely on the construction costs on B three, B four.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Well.
So, that would not include the bridge.
Right, it wouldn't include the bridge.
Or the south field.
You're not at a hundred and ten actual cost yet.
No.
So, it's really on the estimate?
I just wanted that.
Did, on B one, B two, did, would, when you, did they true up? Where did they end up? I'm curious.
Uh, they ended up, um, they had been trued up, if I recall, to sixty, sixty-one million.
So, did they credit back?
No, because it was sixty-three. Turned out to be sixty-three. They had not been trued up to the sixty-eight.
Why did I think it was fifty-six?
And this one, um, does not come out of the eighty-nine million. This one is included in the cost to complete. So.
The saw cost.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, all of those estimated costs to complete were subtracted from the available funds before the eighty-nine million that you have for board decisions.
Anybody have any other questions? All right, I'll call for the vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero with preferential vote from Eli Raymer.
Okay, I'll move for an emotion, a motion to approve the amendment number thirty-seven to the agreement. Oh, we, that's, I'm sorry. All right, um, ratification of the knockdown, removal and hallway of seventeen modular buildings in the Beverly Hills High School Village.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Noah Margot. Um, do you want to just talk about that since this has already happened?
Yes.
I think it would be good for people to hear.
So, this is the last, uh, chapter in the, um, portable village saga. Uh, that those buildings have been there since twenty fifteen. And when they were leased, there was a, part of this cost was included. You have to pay upfront for taking them out. But between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-two, inflation and the prevailing wage has accelerated to the point where this is the additional amount that is required to get them off of here.
Wow.
And we are unfortunately, um, that, I guess, the term this late at night, I can use hostage to William Scotsman, because there's nothing we can do.
Do you have a question?
We did negotiate it down, uh, from almost two hundred thousand, but this is the best we could do.
One question?
Yes.
Are there any modulators left at all in the area?
Yes, there are. Um, M and O is occupying those, um, the pictures you saw of their, their shops with all the tools and the.
Yes, I know. Those are the what's in the, how many are there of those?
Um, I believe there are five, uh, of those. And, let's see, I have it here, I think. And then, um, the facilities, um, offices, uh, there are three. There's a restroom building left. And then there are special ed, um, is still occupying.
Two.
Uh, two and a restroom.
So, totally where there's about ten or eleven, according to the figures?
Yeah, close to that.
Okay.
So, most of the saga's over. Most of the saga.
Yeah, oh, most of the saga, yeah.
Is it, is this hundred and forty-eight thousand already assumed in the amount that's left for board of decisions, or is this already accounted for? This is already budgeted.
This doesn't, this doesn't come out of the eighty-nine.
Thanks.
All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Eli Raymer. May I have a motion for ratification of an agreement with Secure Tech to install additional fire alarm safety devices at Beverly Vista Middle School?
So moved.
All right, the motion was made by Mrs. Margot, I mean, Mrs. Marcus. See, I'm getting tired. May I have a second? Seconded by Noah Margot. Any questions? No comments? All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Eli Raymer. And that brings us to communication from the board members. Eli, would you like to go first?
Yes, um, I have something rather exciting to share, and I wanted to talk about it at the last meeting, but actually, it makes a lot more sense at this one. Um, so, there's an organization I'm a part of that is the California Student Board Members Association. Um, and they have recently worked with multiple groups and have, uh, essentially sponsored a bill that's working its way through the California State Legislature right now, S Senate Bill one, two, three, six. Um, and the title of that bill is an Act to amend section three, five, zero, one, two of the Education Code relating to school districts. And that's the section that defines essentially the role of the student board member. And what this, uh, amendment would allow is for, uh, governing boards of school districts to adopt motions to give their student board member full voting rights, um, and increase the number of school board members, uh, from five to six or seven to eight, uh, and adjusting quorums and votes required to carry respectively. Um, it also provides that short of giving student board members full votes, they could also begin including them in closed session without a vote and allow them to cast their preferential vote on closed session matters, or of course, go all the way and essentially make the student board member a full, uh, board member. So, that's something very exciting. Uh, on April twentieth, it passed the Senate Education Committee with a vote of six to one. Uh, and yesterday, it passed on the Senate floor with a vote of twenty-eight to five to seven. So, now it moves on to the Assembly, where I imagine it will go to the, uh, Assembly Education Committee and then to the Assembly Floor. And then, uh, we'll be able to adopt a, uh, change in our bylaws to reflect this section if the board so chooses. So, I just wanted to report on that. I've been very excited about it and hearing the news yesterday that it passed the Senate floor. Uh, Foley is pretty fantastic. So, thank you. Um, have a good night.
Uh, can I just make one comment on that? That is so cool and good to hear. I remember working on that same issue. I think I mentioned this to you with, at the time, President of a Barry Brucker on the board. When I was a student board member, we looked into that twenty-plus years ago. So, it's actually, and, and we realized we couldn't do it because of the laws. And so, it's cool that that's actually moving forward.
Well, my comment on that was, as I was going to make it, is that I'm so sorry that it's going to pass and we will be able to adopt it perhaps, and you won't be sitting in the wonderful chair that you're so happy about it. And I, for that, I'm sad, but that's, uh, I'm, in the interest of time, I'm going to pass on the, the comments, because it's quite late. I just want to make one comment. I want to say that our laurels are showing. With all of the accolades and the way that the kids performed in tonight, we should be so proud of our students, and I'd like to congratulate everybody and say good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Um, I'll, I'll keep my comments brief. Uh, one, just excited about the legacy grandparent permits, as we've talked about. Um, and just, uh, you know, looking forward to having that conversation as a board. I did want to acknowledge, uh, the parents that came and spoke tonight. Eitan, Ralph, Michal, Sagali, Ritu, uh, uh, well, Ritu wasn't here. But, um, look, uh, uh, by talking about the sex ed, uh, curriculum program, I'm, I'm glad that we'll be having, um, an agendized item at some point or some conversation as a board. We'll figure out how we have that. But because they came and they spoke tonight, I did want to acknowledge them. And just make a general comment. One, I think, as a school district, we have to acknowledge that we're living in a very divisive time. There, there's a lot of change happening in curriculums and policy. Um, and, you know, we've, we've, we've briefly touched on this with that, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion and what's happening in tech, textbooks. Now, we're talking about sex ed. And I think, first and foremost, I think as a school district and administration, as a board, we have to do a better job of getting in front of this stuff and not being reactive, right? Um, I think highlighting very clearly that something new is coming and engaging with parents, engaging with the community, um, as best we can. So, we're not caught in any ways flat-footed. I know we attempted to do that here, and I want to call that out. I know that there was an email sent by, um, you know, Hawthorne to, I think, all the fifth grade parents. I know that there was some communications, though not as, uh, not one, one communication, but maybe there was attempts at different communications that, from what I've heard from some parents, some received and some didn't. So, number one is communication. On substance, um, I think, uh, you know, we'll talk more about this, but I think Michal actually said it very eloquently, that I, I think that there's, you know, as I've looked at this packet, which is, I think, what Michal was referring to, the busybodies. Yeah, so, it is, so, I, I think that there's a lot of good in some of the materials that we've received. There were some of the other videos that I watched that I thought were just, I, I was just scratching my head on how we had come to the conclusion that we necessarily want to put this all in front of our students without some kind of further balance. And I'll tell you one thing that struck me. And as a, as a man, my wife always says, don't mansplain things, but I'm, but, so, so I'm going to try to avoid mansplaining. But, um, one of the things that struck me in viewing some of the videos that I saw is that it felt like there was very little celebration of womanhood. Like, women can give birth to children. They are the source of life. I mean, having a wo-, becoming a woman and going through puberty is something that like should be celebrated. And I think it was, uh, some of the videos that I saw, and I don't know if I saw all of them or not. I went back and forth with Dustin. Maybe I didn't have access to some of them. But it was like, here are the scary changes your body's going through. And, you know, you, you can be all these different genders and whatever, and it wasn't like a, well, well, let's just celebrate being a woman. It, it, it was, it was just kind of bizarre to me. And I just think we could, you know, I just look forward to going through this as a board. I look forward to engaging our parents, to having more of a conversation, um, around this. Um, and then the third one is choice, right? And, and, and I know we've attempted to give some choice, but it, from the, the, the parents that we heard from tonight and the parents that I've also just had conversations with about this over the last couple of days, it was kind of like an all or nothing. You opt in or opt out of the entire curriculum. And I, I know, because, I mean, we went through it, there's some stuff that's important for kids in fifth grade, eighth grade, whatever it is to know. But then there's other stuff that we know is optional under the law, that you, it, it, you know, parents may want to just opt out of that part, but it just felt very, I guess, the way it was interpreted at least was very like, you're either all in or all out. So, I just, I just, these are all opportunities for us to do better. And I, I just appreciate that parents actually came and spoke, because it's very important. That's, feels like sometimes the only way that we're really going to have a dialogue, and it's going to bring issues forward. So, I'm just looking forward to talking about all these things as a board. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Ralph, we, we can't have comments at this point in time. We had our public comment time period. So, I really apologize, but.
Um, yes, it's a larger issue. I'm not going to open up a can of worms right now, but, um, I, I just want to say that, that in defense of educators who make certain decisions, um, it's just as one wouldn't go to their accountant and say, I think this is optional and that's optional. I think, to some extent, and there should be choices, of course. But just keep in mind that when there are people who have masters and doctorates in, uh, curriculum and working with children, or people on administration who have a lot of experience with children, um, they see things in a different way in terms of what you might think is absolutely optional, might not be. And I'm saying, yes, some things sound very exotic or very unusual, but other things, um, you know, are not in this, in what our children are exposed to. And if they're going to have these questions, um, because they will, because even though we try to guard their phones and we try to guard the billboards out there, they see things. And to some extent, we want to be a safe haven for questions. But this is a much larger issue. I just want to say that, um, just keep in mind that, you know, our purview as people who are older than forty, I think you're older than forty, I don't, no.
I am forty.
Okay. You, so, your, uh, your lens is going to be very different than what you think a ten, eleven, twelve-year-old boy or girl is going through, thinking about and questioning, and what they find funny, what they find scary, what they find. You don't know. So, I would more, I would rather we open the conversation and defer to educators and people who work with children know how to get children motivated to listen and that sort of thing, because it's hard for us as adults in some ways. That's all. But I know you are open to that, and I also agree that there has to be an element of opting in and opting out. Uh, and parents, of course, have the, um, prerogative to do that. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, a thank you and, and a hearty good luck to, um, Margie Sanchez from, um, our construction team who, uh, moved on to different pastures last week. Uh, last week was her last week, and she was an integral part of the program, um, and she will be missed.
Um, I, um, I just totally blanked just now because all of these things you just said. I think that it's really important as we talk about these issues, and I agree. I think these can be very sensitive issues. I do think that communication is going to be very key. And I think it's, um, communication in, in all ways, not just about the school and how they are communicating with the parents and the stakeholders, meaning all of our stakeholders. I think it's how we communicate with each other when we speak to each other and that we're respectful and that we're listening. And I would really, um, like to remind everybody of that and that we, um, while we have difficult conversations and we should have. while we have difficult conversations and we should have difficult conversations, we all have to have some sort of ground rules about remembering that we are, should be listening to, understand, and that we are being respectful of each other and our opinions. And I would just think that's good food for thought for our next conversation. So thank you very much.
Um, just quickly, that, um, you know, I, I tend to agree with, with Dr. Stern, although, um, you know, we're open to the conversation um, and the dialogue. I think, uh, the feedback is, is really good. Um, as educators, um, you know, we, you know, we, we look to, to bring the most meaningful resources. And so, um, you know, I know that this gives me an opportunity to take a step back, look at the communication that was made because I'm not entirely sure, uh, what that was, um, at, at Taurus Man. So it, it'll give me an opportunity to, to look at what that is, but, um, you know, we're, we're very intentional, uh, when we bring materials. Um, and especially in an area that we know is, um, is, is often, uh, somewhat controversial for some people. So, um, you know, but we, we are really intentional in the choices that we make. So, um, I look forward to, uh, having some additional information, um, kind of approaching this with the board in a, you know, not in a, a defensive way, but in, in a way to, uh, to, to ensure that we improve, uh, in, in our materials and our communication and, uh, while following the law, uh, because there are really strict, uh, guidelines and laws, uh, about the material that is exposed to students. So, um, we look forward to, to bringing you some more information.
All right, and, um, I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight and staying so late. I really appreciate that you've all taken the time. Thank you Pro West for staying in this whole long time. I really appreciate that. And, um, if there are no other comments, I would like to, uh, adjourn the meeting. It is now nine thirteen. Good night, everyone.